Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on July, I'm sorry, I got it, I got it here, who's talking? Okay. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on July 26, 2016, in the city council chambers located at 1311 Chestnut Street, this place here, to consider the following matters called to order. I call us to order, all council members are present except Mrs. McInally, who is excused, we knew she was going to be out of town on this day. We will move, as we have announced in this agenda, into an executive session. Bastrop City Council will meet in a closed executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, to discuss the following: Section 551.071-1A-B and Section 551.071-2, consultation with attorney or attorneys concerning potential pending threatened and/or contemplated litigation claims and our settlement mediation, including but not limited to the following: municipal water supply, code enforcement matters, subdivision development and/or pending litigation matters concerning 909911 Farm Street and/or matter upon which the attorney or attorneys have a duty and our responsibility to the Texas, pursuant to the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas to report to the governmental body concerning these matters and/or any other matter posted on the agenda. Just for the sake of the public, I want you to decide to know that we will return to our regular session no earlier than 7:15. If we do our business in 15 minutes, we'll go drink tea until 7:15. But if you're here at 7:15, you will not miss any of our regular meeting that follows this. But we may be later than 7:15. That was the best way that Secretary and I could figure out and explain what we're doing. I want to also say this is an effort on the part of the city manager and the mayor to figure out some way to save money on our legal expenses because we can have our special attorney present with us and then send him home to be on his own time, not ours. We are now in executive session. Bastrop City Council will adjourn its executive session and we will return to our regular session and want to give an opportunity for us to, let's see, to first of all, talk about what we've been talking about, see if there's any motions or announcements. So I will call on the city manager to just mention briefly what we've been talking about. Best I can tell, we were talking to our attorney about some litigation. There's a red light district pursuit going on in the state. We have some other stuff we were dealing with.
So you want me to summarize what we discussed?
Just, whatever's legal to talk about, just I'd like to count the citizens to know generally what we were talking about, at least what the subjects were.
Okay. We discussed pending litigation with the Van Diver case, the red light case, what was the other one? The Pine Forest case, and those are, that's not litigation yet.
And then we had, we heard some news that you'd like to have somebody announce?
I would, I would like for Mr. Talbot to make an announcement.
Mike, come to the mic, this has got to be on television.
Today, Administrative Law Judge O'Malley issued his proposal for decision concerning the city's well permit at Excess Ranch. I am pleased to let the citizens and the council know that the judge's conclusion was that all evidence shows that the city's application for its operating permit for well number one should be granted with the full amount requested of 2,000 acre feet and pumping at 150 gallons per minute by the Lost Pines Grand R District, with the spacing variance granted and that the city's proposed mitigation fund will protect all wells owners in the area affected in any way. This is a tremendous victory for our city. A lot of hard work went into getting a ruling which was 100% in the favor of the city. I want to express my appreciation to the city's dedicated team, Ms. Brown, Mr. Shan Rutherford, our water litigator, Paul Terrill, and our engineer, Jean Cupra, and James Dwyer, and Excess Ranch for making this groundwater available to the city at such a low price. I'm especially pleased that I was able to, we were able to accomplish this 30-year water supply for the citizens of Bastrop before leaving the city. Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much. Thank you very much. You and JC worked really hard on this. We had a special attorney, water attorney helpness with it, a lot of citizens testified for us. We spent a long, a long road and we understand that water is the new oil in Texas and we found that out for sure. So we hope that this very quickly results in a permit for us to provide water for our citizens and our customers locally. So thank you so much for what you've done. I will also ask if there are any motions that may have come out of our executive session?
I would like to make a motion that the council put under review the cases, local cases that we have in litigation with an attorney to be determined by the mayor, the city manager, and one council member of the mayor's choice.
So the, did you say review?
For their merits. The local cases that we're involved in, I would like to have them reviewed for their merits as far as how we move forward, who's working on those, and I would like to direct the city manager and the mayor and one council member of their choice to make a decision on what attorney we use to review those cases.
All right, I'll take that as a motion. Councilmember Jones, and ask if there's a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. You didn't specify a time, but I would say as soon as possible, I would assume.
Tomorrow, if we could.
But whenever possible, was that?
Right. And I'd like to make another motion.
Well, I mean, we haven't voted on that one. Is there any discussion? All right. So, Andy, you have the, you understand the motion? Got it down? We're going to do a review of legal stuff, local legal things. I guess call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Council membership?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rosso?
All right, thank you. Deborah, you have another motion?
I would like to make a motion that all invoices submitted by any attorney working for the city from this day forward.
We have something on the agenda very similar. Do you want to withdraw that one and just make this one? Or, oh, this is coming forward. I apologize. You know, this is in order. I apologize. Please, please, okay?
I would like to make a motion that all invoices submitted to the city of Bastrop by any attorney that we have working for us be made public. I would also like to make an emotion to direct the city manager and the mayor to look at how we can make any previous invoices available to the public without jeopardizing any sort of strategy or previous information provided in those invoices that might create some sort of compromising situation, but at the very least, everything from this day forward. If the public wants to see that, they can see it, anything that we pay. So that's my motion.
I've got a second from the mayor pro tem. So we've got, going forward, we will instruct the city manager to see that invoices, invoices for legal fees are in a form that they can be given to the public.
On request here at City Hall without having to go through the AG's office, right?
On request, and that the city manager investigate ways to do something similar as much as possible in the past.
With any previous invoices, yes.
All right, is that clear? Willie, clear to you? Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to propose that these be separate motions, so that...
You can do that, you don't have to say anymore. First motion is, I'm going to take the first motion as going forward, that I understand your motion to mean that we will instruct the city manager to make sure that all invoices for legal fees be in a form that allow us to publish them upon request to the public. Is that correct? Willie, you okay with that? Okay, that's, that's motion number one. And is there any discussion? Ann, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rosso?
Yes.
Council membership?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
All right, Deborah, would you state the other, what is now a separate motion?
I would like to direct the city manager to make all previous invoices available to the public in a format that's not going to jeopardize any sort of information or detail that was provided in those invoices before the attorneys were aware that those were going to be made public, which might include some sort of redacting or reviewing of the attorneys.
Okay. I'll second. Do we have a second from Gary? Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to add some discussion to that, and that is, my direction to the city manager would be to look at the cost associated with doing this, and I think, I guess what I'd like to hear from the city manager is to say that we can do that back to some date for a certain amount of dollars of time that it will take to clean any invoices from information that would be potentially damaging to current cases. So I'd like the city manager to come back with a proposal that says it is practical to go back, let's say, one year and clean up one year's worth of information, or six months, or whatever it is, that is practical and reasonable without going to undue expense. I think the point, I believe, of the motion that I seconded is to let the public know that their dollars are being spent in a, in a fashion, of good business fashion, that we're not spending money unnecessarily. And I don't know that we need to go back forever because I could think that would be very expensive for us to regenerate invoices that are clean. But, so, again, I agree with the motion, I think it's a good motion. I instruct, I would instruct the city manager, just, let's be reasonable on what period of time is cost effective to do.
Well, can I do this with my motion? Just because I'd like to get this done today?
Sure.
I think it's reasonable to go back six months, anything over that, you know, just understand that could cost a lot of money, you might want to go through the AG's office because we've got to resubmit all these back to the attorneys for redaction, it can be very expensive. So I direct that we can go back as far as six months for right now.
Let me ask you to, we're not, let me, you're not directing, you're maybe making a motion.
I will, I will, I'll leave my second.
Take your second off.
I'll take my second off.
So start to make the motion again in motion form. I move that way.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that previous invoices up to six months be made available to the public, understanding that those need to be, they're going to have to be resubmitted to the attorneys, there's going to have to be, they're going to have to have an opportunity to do any sort of redacting on those so that no pending litigation is jeopardized. If we need to go back further than that, then I think, then I would direct the city manager to say if it's reasonable to go, we just don't want to, we're trying not to spend more money, you know? So...
So is that, you have a second?
I'll second that.
Now, is that clear to you, Steve?
It is.
Tell us what you think the motion was.
Well, I'm, I'm actually up to date on this one. I'm fine with this, but you're not explaining which attorneys. Are we talking every attorney we have?
I think it was all attorneys.
Yes, all attorneys.
Okay, I am clear on what she's wanting.
Okay. So you're, the, if this motion passes, it will be instructing Steve to do as he understands and as Deborah described. Any discussion? Ann, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Council membership?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rosso?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Anything else, council members or city manager that needs to come out of the executive session? I think we're done. I will invite all of you, as we move into item two, to join me in the pledges to the I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. If you are able, please remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Jones.
Lord, I come to you this evening with a very grateful heart, Father. I thank you for all of the citizens that are here that choose to involve themselves either as volunteers or participants in the running of this fine city, Father. I just thank you for the opportunity that we have as council members, for each and every member that's up here, for Councilmember McInally, who is not here tonight, but we just thank you, Father, for each and every member that we have, for our staff, and again, for all the committees that we have, we just thank you, Father. We thank you for all the people that are working to make this just the best place. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Sean Kirkpatrick, director, executive director of the BEDC, will make a report on that organization's
Mayor, city council, city manager, community, thank y'all for having me. I am going to keep this as short as possible. The BEDC, since I saw y'all last, has had two meetings. One was a special meeting and budget workshop. We have received the contract for 903 Main Street and are waiting on closing on that. The survey is in progress. We hope to close on that by the next time that I see you. The budget workshop went well. It budded up against y'all's council meeting, and so we did a budget workshop at our regular meeting as well last Monday night. Two items of interest for the council that you'll see coming out, we suspect at the August budget when the board considers the adoption of that, is a capital improvement project for the Loop 150 trail expansion from Highway 71 to the SQ Trail, or SQ off of Loop 150 there where DPS is at, basically picking up there where Coffee Dog is, back down to DPS. That's an interconnecting trail to some commercial districts, residential districts. We think it's going to provide some additional ability and some economic benefit to the downtown region as we continue to see some southwestern residential growth and be able to make that walkable, bikeable to the downtown district. Also, the EDC board a couple of months ago voted to do what's called a defeasance for the certificate of obligations for 2008, a issuance that the city refinanced or refunded earlier this year. That defeasance is basically those bonds are callable, or certificates of obligation are callable in the next budget cycle, and so the EDC board will be putting enough money in the budget to go ahead and call that bond note. In future years, we will have no principal or interest obligations moving forward in the FY 18 budget. With that, at the regular meeting, Mike Barnes, who is our strategic planning consultant, came and did a follow-up to the strategic plan review we did last year. That video is online, if you don't, Mike had some very good information in there. Eric Davis from KSA Engineering, who does a lot of work with economic development corporations, or with economic development corporations around the state of Texas, and is a certified economic developer, also presented some information related to a program that we're launching to assist us in better marketing the industrial park and other areas of town in our type A, our primary job recruiting efforts. What we've seen in the, in the last couple of weeks, in the last three or four weeks, is strong activity across all of the sectors that we work in, from our primary job creation and type A projects, as well as what we refer to as type B projects, which are retail professional service type sector jobs, and we're seeing a lot of commercial developer interest in and around Bastrop, as well as residential and development. So right now, it looks like Bastrop is strong, has a very strong economy, and has a very positive outlook. So that's all that we have. If y'all have any questions, I know we have probably another item, and I'll be called back later.
Questions? Thank you, Sean.
Thank you all.
I now call on our distinguished chief financial officer, Tracy Waldner, to come forward.
Tonight, we have on the agenda our presentations for our hot funding applicants. They all completed a package, turned it in by our due date of June 30th, and they will be coming up here one at a time to present their three minutes to you guys, their application and all their backup as part of your, your council packet. The first one is Tough Mudder, and they could not be here, but they sent a video.
Okay. Do you have a way to show them? While you're getting that up, I want to thank your efficient staff, especially yourself, who works so hard on making this work. It's very important to our community, and y'all do a wonderful job. Steve, commend this part of your operation. They do a great job, and I get a chance to see them do it. Here we go. This is Tough Mudder Event Productions Incorporated, and the mayor pro tem with all presentations will put a three-minute clock on it.
Looks like her presentation is a little longer, so I'll stop it.
Yes. Well, don't start till they start.
Central Texas 2017. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present today. Unfortunately, both my flights yesterday and today were canceled, as evidenced by my growing number of boarding passes. Otherwise, I would have loved to be there in person to present. I've heard such great things about your community from our Tough Mudder event delivery teams, and I can understand why they're so excited to return to this community year after year. We greatly value our partnership with Bastrop and are looking forward to strengthening this relationship in 2017. Tough Mudder is a 10 to 12 mile obstacle course challenge that tests participants' strength, but above all, teamwork. In 2016, Tough Mudder introduced Tough Mudder Half, which is a five mile obstacle course challenge that offers all the thrills of a Tough Mudder, but at just half the distance. Together this year, Tough Mudder and Tough Mudder Half Central Texas drew about 10,000 participants and spectators to the community, and we anticipate this to grow in 2017. Tough Mudder Central Texas 2017 will be held the first weekend of May at McMason Ranch. For the first time in 2017, Tough Mudder Central Texas will consist of a Tough Mudder event and a Tough Mudder Half event running concurrently on both Saturday and Sunday. By introducing a new collaborative event format, we aim to draw an increased number of participants to Bastrop, thus introducing a new demographic to the region and further marketing Bastrop as a premier destination. Bastrop is an emerging tourism destination in central Texas, and attracting an increased number of Tough Mudder participants to the area will increase brand awareness for the city and promote a longer stay in the community. As over 98% of this year's participants were visitors to Bastrop, next year's event is a great opportunity to further market Bastrop to non-local participants on a national level as a premier destination location, and build upon the reputation that Bastrop attracts the newest and most exciting events to the community. From Tough Mudder Central Texas 2015 to Tough Mudder Central Texas 2016, an event in which we partner with the city of Bastrop, there's a strong evidence of growth in overnight activity. In 2015, 50% of participants stayed overnight in the community, while in 2016, that number grew by 5% to 55% that stayed overnight. In 2015, 62% of participants that stayed overnight stayed in local hotels. That number grew by almost 10% in 2016. In addition to these statistics, 60% of this year's central Texas mutters were first-time Tough Mudder participants. Tough Mudder is eager to continue to attract new participants from surrounding locations to Bastrop for this event. To build upon this growth in 2017, Bastrop's potential investment will support Tough Mudder in executing a number of digital marketing campaigns to best promote Bastrop accommodations and inspire organic tourism to the region post event. Tough Mudder is looking to begin contact...
That's about it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tough Mudder. Bastrop Opera House.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, my name is David Bragg. I'm appearing here tonight in my capacity as president of Bastrop Opera House. Yes, we're asking for some of the funds to be allocated to the opera house, but before I make that request, I would like to make what I think is an important announcement, and that is Bastrop Opera House is on its way to becoming completely restored to its With the city's help, this past year, we were able to put on a new roof, completely redo the stage lighting so it's up to code, completely redo the overhead lighting so it's up to code, and put in an automatic screen to show movies at the opera house the way it used to be many years ago. The, we have an eight-member, very active board that is committed to these projects in restoring the opera house, not only to restore the building, not only to preserve it, but also to preserve and restore Chester Ices, who for these many years has been carrying this load alone and on his back with some volunteer help. So that's what we're doing, and we're very excited about that. Now to the funding request. We've got three parts of our funding request. The first one deals with what we're calling theater escape weekends, and that's where we try to bring people into Bastrop, you know, to see movies, to see plays, to see whatever's offered. This, next year, we'll have seven major production, stage productions in the opera house. We will have three children's productions in the opera house. And included in this is a very important concept for the opera house, and that is to have funds available to pay stipends to actors that are willing to, that are needed for particular parts. You can't always put actors in a play when they need a particular kind of character if they're not available locally through volunteers. You've got to have a stipend to be able to pay it. So that's number one. Number two is historical tourism, bringing people here for that purpose. And to do that, we have two things so far that we do regularly. One is each year, the Bastrop County Bar Association puts on a play recreating or enacting a murder trial from the old history of Bastrop, always historically accurate, and each of the three years we've done that, I'm happy to say the performances have been sold out. Also, this year, of course, there'll be Yesterfest 2017. Lastly, the third category is historic preservation and restoration to help achieve historical economic development. And this includes installing at the opera house a hands-on, for children, a Victorian theater exhibit to try and show people what the opera house looked like 100 years ago, so that kids can see it, they can actually pull the curtains down and do these kinds of things, to again, transport people back to a different era, to a different time. We also hope we can help with establishing a hospitality center that would be able to be staffed by some people. Thank you very much. We hope you'll consider us favorably.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Bastrop Fine Arts Guild.
I'm Patricia Randulik, and I'm the executive director of the Lost Pines Art Center, which is run by the Lost Pines Art League, which you knew as Bastrop Fine Arts Guild.
Jeanette Condray, a board member of Bastrop Fine Arts Guild, and now the new Lost Pines Art League. We have three different events that we put in application for hot funds for. The first one is, would be our 11th year for our gala, and the gala has grown every year, and it's brought in people from all over the state and even outside the state, bringing into tourism. Other events that also, around that same weekend, that brings even more tourism in. The second event is our second year of our art conference, and this is actually a national event. The invitations go out all over the United States. And so the conference will be a two-day event, and it would involve at least three nights staying over... staying over for our hot funds. Also, the third event is, last year was our first year, we took over the Selena's event. We didn't want that event to go away. It's been around Bastrok for about 30 years. And so it was our first year and we used the Performing Arts Center to do all the awards for the children. We matted every piece of art that these kids made from first grade all the way up to seniors. We also invited the Selena's family that lives in San Antonio, and they were very excited to see that this event is starting to grow. And we want to invite other teachers, other school districts that could come into Bastrok for this event, so they can see how really, really we think art is important to our students and how it goes into every subject that they do. And so for those three major events, we are asking for hot funds, and we thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
I want to add one point with the conference that we have this year. We're incorporating an artist panel, which will be a discussion with several artists so that all the students in the 10th, 11th, 12th grade will be invited free of card to this event, and it gives them the opportunity to ask questions and see how art and creativity can affect their lives.
Thank you.
Is it true that there's more Selena's paintings hanging in the White House than any other artist?
I'm not sure, but that probably could. We'll check into it.
I know there's one hanging in Bastrok.
Yeah, we have several of it.
City Bastrok owns one of them.
L.B. Jane with her big cluster of artists.
Bastrok Family YMCA.
My name's Terry Moore. I'm the Executive Director of the Bastrok YMCA. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Burning Pine Run. This is currently, we're in the planning event time right now for the fifth year, this is the fifth anniversary, of the 2011 fires. That run came together through volunteers that said, you know, we need to get together a year after the fire and celebrate our recovery. It has turned into a celebration of the resilience of the community. Has somewhere over the five years, the runners or participation comes between 700 and 1,200 participants. Are expecting a large crowd this year. We did have to reroute the course because of the dam, so there's a lot of reroute and all that kind of stuff. I want to point out that because we are in the fifth year and the race hasn't happened this fifth year, we did add to our registration a question on there that says, will you be staying overnight? So we will have that number, a very specific number for you, once the race is over on the 10th of September. We have added that again, we'll do that again for 2017. Right now in registration, our registration is 80% out of town, 20% in town. We do bring a lot of people in. All of the money that we're requesting goes into advertising and out-of-market, primarily Houston and San Antonio and Dallas. We do all of our marketing digital. It comes up to, somebody's running in a race, ours comes up on their phone as an ad, so they know to come to our race. So we're very specifically targeting runners from out of town. The proceeds from this race go split between the Bastrok YMCA and the Friends of the Lost Pines. So the proceeds and profits from the race split equally for the financial assistance program with the Y and the revitalization of the park. We're excited about the run. It's always a fun time. If you have some volunteer hours, we'd love to have you out there too, just saying. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Bastrok Downtown Business Alliance. Bastrok Downtown Business Alliance. Brad, sorry. Let me see if I can... You got shown jobs? We had experts back to back.
I'm Brad Cook with the Downtown Business Association. This is Kathleen Queso, also with the Business Association, and we want to talk about Lost Pines Christmas. And this is our 10th year for this event, and the event grows every year. So as we, as we talk about Lost Pines Christmas 2016, it's going to be all about the kids. This is very, very important to bring these people in and it's going to bring tourists in along with that. This season is very, very important. Fourth quarter is super important to the downtown businesses. Most downtown businesses will do between a third and half of their business during the course of this time. So when we look at the season, this year is really special because we actually have five weeks. Now everybody says, you know, how can that be? There's the same number of days. We have five weekends. So we're going to be able to pull some people in for that shopping weekend four and shopping weekend five. We'll be starting with Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, Lot Sale Fest, and we have the First Friday Art Walk. We come into the weekend doing the Christmas swirl. We have the Lost Pines Christmas, and then we have the two other shopping weekends, which are very important. So it's going to take place between the 9th and the 11th. We, from joint produces with Main Street and DBA, we kick off on the 9th, and it's always been a very big weekend. We continue to build on that last year by making, you know, we want to make this one weekend worthy to travelers by using hot funds, TCA grants, and sponsors, make all events and all entertainment free. So again, we'll go with the ice skating rink that will be down there, free skating for all the kids or anybody else that wants to get out there and slip and slide. We'll again transform Main Street into Christmas craft food vendors. We'll have professional actors doing storytelling. We'll be having carriage rides, photo walks, ops. Again, all this is free. And let's not forget the parade. The parade is a Bastrok tradition. That takes place Saturday, December 10th, and we'll even have a kind of a very special kind of reindeer sleigh for Santa to come in. Very unusual. We want to continue to do this and promote the shops and restaurants that reside on Main Street and get these people in, get them looking at the town, let them realize it's a place to be, and then come on back in.
Thank you to finish up very good.
Let me run this just real quick and then I'll be out of here. We have ads running right now that if you, TV ads, and this is, this is one of them. I'll just do this for 10 seconds and get out of the way because I think it's important.
Go ahead. Place restricted then.
Hurry up and slow down in downtown Bastrok. Whether it's relaxing on the Colorado River, sitting back and enjoying your favorite music, pondering that new purchase, or lingering over a glass of wine, downtown Bastrok is the place to be. Small town, big experience. 10-second ads, 5-second ads running at KXAM and two other television stations. Folks, thank you.
Thank you. Family Crisis Center.
I'm from the Family Crisis Center. We're once again asking the city of Bastrok to fund us for our Pedal Through the Pines fundraising event, which takes place in March. This March will be our 15th year to hold this fundraiser. We will be adding another route this year called the Anniversary Route. Most of our participants do come from outside of Bastrok. They do stay in the campgrounds, local bed and breakfast hotels and motels. We certainly want to thank the city for their past support of our event. We don't ask for a huge amount. It's a very nominal amount, but nevertheless, that amount means a lot to us. It helps ensure that every participant and volunteer gets a T-shirt, of course, with the city of Bastrok logo on the T-shirt as part of a promotion. Thank you.
Bastrok County Historical Society.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Georgina Ngozi, and I'm here on behalf of the Bastrok County Historical Society. We submitted an application for hot funds to support preservation and restoration as well as heritage tourism. And this past year, we saw more than 9,800 visitors, more than 5,000 of them visited our museum, and almost 3,000 stayed overnight. We've expanded our advertising efforts to include radio in addition to print advertisement, and we've also expanded our outreach to education, students attending our local schools, both private and public. I am happy to entertain any questions that you may have regarding our applications.
So the schools, tell me about that.
Oh, we had a wonderful year. We had not only the students attend, but we opened our doors to the teachers, full staff of Mina Elementary School, which was followed by a visit of 150 students. The Episcopal School invited us into their classroom to present something new we created called the Lunch Box History Case, which was an opportunity to take artifacts into the classroom. That visit was followed up by the students attending the museum, and we plan to do more and more of that in the year ahead.
And they grow up, they'll come back here with their grandchildren?
Well, the wonderful thing, as you know, Mayor, is that our museum represents this community, and there's nothing better than having children come in and find members of their family or people that they know. Interestingly enough, we had a gown on display that was the gown of their principal's great-great-grandmother. So it's pretty special.
Pretty special. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bastrok Chamber of Commerce.
My name's Becky Wammel, and I represent the Bastrok Chamber of Commerce, and I think that pictures speak for our words. I just want to show you some photos of the event that took place earlier this month and show you what you paid for this last year. The Patriotic Festival has been going on 25 years here in Bastrok. We've confirmed that with the Austin Symphony Band as well as our vendor for the fireworks. It was very well attended this year. I think we were very conservative on the number of hotel room stays that we create, but this is a Bastrok tradition, and we do know from the surveys that we did of people at the park that there's people that come from Leander and Dripping Springs and San Antonio that want to avoid the big crowds of Austin. While they're here, they do spend money shopping and eating in our hotels, shopping and eating in our shops. And we do know that from our board of directors that lots of families come for the weekend. And again, that's not generating a lot of hotel room stays, but at the same time, they're eating here, they're shopping here. And again, it was a fabulous event. Cooler weather was in our favor, so the crowd was much more larger than it was in previous years, so. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank all of you who do so much to promote tourism in our area, in our industry, in our community. It's very, very important to us. We take this very seriously. We will be going through a process like we've done in the past in terms of deciding who to fund what with. Item six, we had a wonderful report about the comprehensive plan a couple of weeks ago, or was it last week? Can't remember. We heard about the progress that's being made and the fact that we all should be, we should be through with that plan and be able to vote on it with any luck before the end of the year. And we don't have anything right now to distribute, do we? Nothing necessarily except what you're going to hear about as we go on for future meetings. You have an item for a future meeting?
Let's hear it. Concerning our potential agreement with excess ranch on the...
Why don't you talk to the city manager about that under meetings? Because this is the place where we list future meetings, but I want you to call for that when we get to the city manager's report. Would that be okay?
Sure.
I haven't been as clear about that. Usually we'll list something. We just left it there. We didn't have anything under, there's a, nothing under C, sorry. But we'll come back to you, Willie. There's a, just an informational communication under item D for those who want to look at it. City managers' informational report.
Thank you. I'd like to bring your attention on the DMO. We did reach out to the DMO pros, and the earliest they could meet to begin discussions is tomorrow, the 27th. So we're going to be having discussions with them tomorrow, the early part of the contract. Also, number two, I'm assuming y'all have had the pleasure of driving over the overpass by now, but the overpass is open at Tahitian. I do want to make sure everybody is aware that it is still a construction zone and it will be for a couple more months until it takes stock wraps up. The other thing is, on number five, the budget, we have missed a couple of budget workshops that I talked to Tracy Waldron, and she says that as long as we make the August 2nd budget meeting, that we're going to be okay. However, we are going to have to do all of the budgets on that August 2nd instead of breaking them up like we had been. So we're okay, but I've included in my packet the budget calendar, so if y'all have any questions or anything, just look at it. Also, I was asked by our city attorney, J.C. Brown, just a minute ago, a little bit ago, that she'd like to make an announcement.
Yeah, J.C., will you come up?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the last seven months or so, I've been the subject of a dozen or more council meeting agenda postings, and as you know, that's the case again this evening with item D8. I was originally told that D8 was to be an evaluation of me, and then I was told today it was more along the lines of a surprise termination. But no matter what it is, the posting is too vague for me to know or for the public to know either. But I'm pleased to save everyone the time and energy tonight in delving into it, and I'm announcing my resignation.
After much soul searching and reflection and a lot of today's activities, I regret to inform you that this letter serves as official notice of my resignation from the position of City Attorney for the city of Bastrok, Texas, a position that I've held with the city since 1999. When the matter of my termination was, first arose and was discussed with the interim city manager while I was in Canada on a personal vacation in early July of this year, I was concerned about whether there needed to be any advance notice, but Chief Adcock assured me that Mayor Kessless and he had discussed it, and no prior notice would be required because my replacement was immediately available. So in reliance on these assurances, this resignation is effective immediately. Additionally, I have reviewed the various matters that I'm currently working on, and I find that none of them have impending deadlines and that no harm will result to the city from this immediate resignation. The city's interim management and the council have had adequate opportunity to work with me in determining the status of all pending legal matters over the past several months. And further, Mr. Talbot remains with the city in the capacity of senior advisor until September 1st, and he's fully informed on the status of pending legal matters as well. I will begin work to provide the city with any files and final documents and contracts that are in my possession that have not already been provided to the city and that are not already in the city's possession, and that will make the transition more smooth, easier. It's been my distinct honor and privilege to serve the city of Bastrok and its citizens for 17-plus consecutive years, going on 18 years now, and to see the city grow and prosper during this time. However, the actions of a few of the city's elected officials have caused me to conclude that it's no longer in the city's best interest or my own personal best interest to continue to serve as your city attorney at this time. It might surprise some to learn that nearly every council member over the last few weeks has privately spoken with me and assured me that he or she would like me to continue to work as city manager, I mean, as city attorney. to work as city manager, I mean, as city attorney. And the majority of even gone so far as to express their sentiments in public at different meetings. But the public message that's been consistently orchestrated by a couple of city officials seems to be consistently to the contrary, and this negativism and continual attack, which I believe is entirely unwarranted, has now escalated to the extent that I simply no longer have the energy or desire to continue to subject my good name and hard-earned reputation to it any further. The outstanding and matchless growth and accomplishments of previous mayors, councils, Mr. Talbot, and the city's team of consultants, as well as its dedicated and hard-working directors and employees, of which I was fortunate to be a part, will remain proud professional achievements for me for many years to come. And I wish only the best to the city's faithful employees and consultants, many of whom I've enjoyed working with for almost two decades. I'm extremely proud of all that the city of Bastrop has gained and accomplished over the past almost 18 years, and I sincerely wish only the very best for the many honest and fine citizens of this truly unique community. And I thank you all.
Ms. Brown, I'm not going to venture a response at this point because I'm not sure what to say, but I am going to call a five-minute recess, bars. All right. We will return to our agenda. I'm a city manager. Are you done with your report?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to catch my breath here, and I think, Willie, you had a question for the city manager about a possible agenda item?
I'll address you, Mayor, and the city manager, because I believe that y'all work hand-in-hand with the secretary on agenda items. But I would ask, before we move further along with Excess Ranch on their Pid or whatever you call it, and by the next meeting that we address two particular items concerning our groundwater rights purchase agreement within particularly 6.3 and number 10 of that agreement, and ask if you put that on the agenda for discussion before we go any further with the agreement that we're working on with Excess Ranch on their Pid.
Before we move forward with the Pid, we talk about the agreement, a couple of sections of the agreement to purchase water rights from Excess Ranch. Is that correct? What's the title of that document you got?
Groundwater Rights Purchase Agreement.
Okay.
But I would always, but in the meantime, I would encourage the city manager to contact somebody within that organization, whether it's John Knight or Mr. Foster, but our willingness to exercise our option on 6.3.
So, and you have that down? This will, we'll post that for the August 9th, Willie?
That's the first meeting on August 9th.
Well, we have a special meeting next week.
Well, I don't want to do it during the meeting.
Okay, August 9th. Ann, yes?
I will be gone on that August 9th meeting.
Well, you and I will talk about it, and we'll talk to Willie and see if it's better to put it off, but we'll figure out something. But anyway, we'll mark it.
That's not going to happen to you from making that phone call, will it?
No, but, okay, we'll do it.
No, sir, I will make the phone call. Ms. Del Rosso, one question I have. Do you want our water attorney here, so he may can answer some of these questions? Do you want our water attorney here, so he may can answer some of these questions?
Well, I mean, this is a council decision. I mean, this is just how you read the agreement. I mean...
Well, let's, let's, let's let the city manager figure it out.
I want you to talk with the mayor on that and we'll figure it out, okay?
Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have that down? Steve? Okay. Any other questions or requests of the city manager? Okay, we are now ready for citizens' comments. We have any? This is a portion of our agenda that's important to us. You can talk about anything that's not on the agenda, and we will, we will listen to you, but we may not comment. You have three minutes. Jane Sanders.
I'm Jane Sanders from Bastrop Homecoming, and I thought we were on the agenda up until the day, the time I got here and realized that we weren't.
Tell us, tell us about what?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm with Bastrop Homecoming. It's a, one of the largest festivals that Bastrop has for those of you that don't know about it. This is our 60th, 9th year. It is a four-day festival that definitely, definitely puts heads in beds, and what I'm talking to you is about the Hotel Motel Funds. We have received them since y'all have opened them up to the public, and it's just, it was an oversight on our part. In fact, when I was talking to the person who told me she submitted it, she even gave me an exact date, and I have her letter that she meant to turn in, but somehow it did not get turned in, and I know deadlines are there for a reason. This is a big part of Bastrop, and it's not like that 70th year will go away, because it will definitely happen next year. But receiving the funds from y'all is definitely something we need. And so I would like to be able to, and I don't want anything illegal, but I would like to be able to submit our application for the Hotel Motel Funds now to be considered for 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Any questions?
Thank you. Bonnie Coffey.
I am here tonight on behalf of United Citizens for Bastrop Taxpayers. I am here to speak to the glaring lack of information in city council agendas and agenda packets. The example is tonight's. There's not enough sufficient information. There are agenda items that have only an agenda item noted on the standardized agenda recommendation form, and that have no accompanying supporting data, background information, or historical information to support some rather vague agenda items. There are no indications of nature of request or a brief overview of the agenda item. There's no note of any policy implications, simply an agenda item title and a party making the request. With no documentation or data on these forms, I have no way of knowing the need for a particular action. This lack of information has been discussed previously, and a request made to always provide backup. I don't think it's too much to ask that we at least know what motion is required. On tonight's agenda, the following have no backup documentation, information, or planned background. A5, something about the release of legal funds to the public. D1, the creation of a charter review committee. D4, an offer from BEDC to purchase 921 Main Street. D7, the creation of a sign ordinance committee. D8, regarding the city attorney. And D9, the process for selecting a permanent city manager. By the way, there is no such thing as a permanent job. A particular concern is agenda item A5. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the release of the city attorney legal fees to the public. With zero documentation or information of what this item is, the council's going to vote on this item through the consent agenda with no discussion or opportunity for citizens to speak for or against an item. I would hope that this is not a blank check to evade the protections of an open records request, which provides protections to the city and should not be circumscribed. Will release of this information compromise attorney-client privilege? Will it compromise ongoing litigation and possibly open the city and this council to lawsuits? This is about the process of how this city council governs and its transparency. How can I be an informed citizen when there is nothing to explain the need for a particular action? How can I make an informed decision on what to speak to if I have no information prior to the city council meeting? How can this city council, how is U.S. council members, make an informed decision with no supporting documentation or background of proposed action? That's why there are so many questions about the true transparency of this council and this administration.
Lee Hall.
My name is Lee Hall, and I've been a citizen of Bastrop coming up on five years now. And the last few years, I've gotten a lot more involved watching what's going on, gotten to know a lot of y'all up there, gotten to know everyone else out here. And the last six months or so has been kind of unsettling for me because of a lot of bickering that's going back and forth, name-calling going on behind one another's backs, just the outrage that people are showing. And I don't think things are that bad. I know there's reasons to be upset. I've been upset myself at times, and if I really thought about it, I could find some things to be upset about right now. But I want to thank all of y'all for being up there and taking the criticism that you do and fighting the good fight. Thank you for securing our water. Thank you for providing housing and the revenue that's going to come to our city through that. And thank you for guiding our city to a growing sales tax base quarter over quarter over quarter, and just keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to deal with citizens' comments, citizens' comments, consent agenda, one at a time. Item A1 is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, June 28, 2016. It's in the packet. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, you can't do that. Would you please call the roll? Second was by Bill.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso? Yes. Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Item A2 is approval of Bastrop Marketing Corporation request for reimbursement of funds for June 2016 in accordance with the agreement to be spent on advertising and marketing the city Bastrop area. Ms. Waldron? You want to, anything you want to say about that? You don't have to. Pretty standard, but I want to...
Well, just that this one will be the last.
This is the last one of those because the...
This is June's report.
And this is the last.
Yes.
Well, you were here to begin, you were here to end. You want to make the motion? Let's hear it.
Second.
Moved and seconded for this last appropriation, our approval. I think we're ready to vote, Ann.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Item A3, consideration, discussion, and possible action on accepting the unhonored monthly financial report for the period ending June 30, 2016.
Move to accept.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Item four is appointment by me. It's necessary, we have on our bylaws for the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation Board, we call the Pid. The city manager is on that board, ex officio, but still, he must be appointed, and I make that appointment subject to confirmation by the council. Is there a motion to confirm?
Second.
Willie and then Gary, seeing no one rising to the mic, I call for the vote. Ann?
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones, have we dealt with A5 in another fashion? We withdraw item A5. This is, item A6, is consideration, discussion, and possible action on setting the funding available for community support service funding in fiscal year 17 in the amount of $80,000. Tracy, you want to say anything about that? It's their standard, it's what we've done in the past years. This is the group that we heard from in our last meeting when they made a request. This money is supplied by the Bastrop Power and Light as a donation to the community. These are service organizations that provide help that we could never do as a city, and we simply helped them, give them a little boost for doing that with this amount.
I move to approve the funds.
I think we're ready to vote, Ann.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Item A7 is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the revision to correct textual errors in the original ordinance and ordinance granting a zone change from SF9, Single Family Residential 9 and 8 slash OS Agricultural Open Space to PD Plan Development, residential plan development for approximately 90.91 acres within all, I think that's all, Bastrop Town Track, located north of the railroad tracks on the northwest corner of Riverwood, Hawthorne, and Carter Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as part of the Potty Creek Bend, setting up conditions and establishing effective date. Yeah, I want to ask Mr. Adcock, this is just sort of a, one of those Scrivener's Error type thing, or a little tiny mistake?
Melissa, can you come up here?
So we're going to ask Melissa McCollum to report, and then we'll call, I'll call on Willie after she says...
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. This is to essentially fix the Scrivener's Error. It does not change any of the requirements or changes to the code. It does, however, specify that 60% of the development of lot layout and not necessarily related to residential structures, because the development will look at the development or how the lots are laid out and not the actual building of homes.
Willie? I didn't catch everything you just said. It didn't change anything?
No. It fixed, it fixes some of, it's Scrivener's Error to fix, some of the language in there talked about 60% of the residential structures, and we're changing the reference, which is in there, but we added the word residential structures to be 60% of the lots or the infrastructure of the lots. So it's not actually the building of the homes, it's more of the layout and the subdivision of the lots.
I move to approve.
There's a second? Yeah, Willie, are you still unsure?
Still unsure, but you know, I voted against this because the neighborhood wanted to vote against the plan development in the neighborhood, which had no effect on the other members of the council prior to the election. So I mean, I don't, I don't know what happens if this gets turned out, so I don't, that's where I was going with this question and quite much with other technical areas. What happens if this didn't get approved?
I would say the existing ordinance that's currently in place would be in place.
It wouldn't change much, but it would, it would help technically, in your opinion, to make it better.
Yes. This clarifies the intent of not only what the council voted on, but in the motion in regards to 60% of the development, not the actual construction of the residential structures.
Anybody else gain thoughts? I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's, let's see what the vote is.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D8 is an item that comes up every year, but apparently the council must approve it. So this is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the approval of Bastrop Arts in Public Places, Art in Public Places, 2017 Transformer Cabinet mural project called to artists. Troy, anything you need to say about that?
Those are marriages, third.
Move to approve.
Second. In discussion? We've seen those around, it's the same program. Very, very, very effective and good program. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Item A9 is very similar. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the approval of Bastrop Art in Public Places, 2017 Sculpture Project Called to Artists.
Move to approve.
I think we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Thank you all, and those, those of you that are on the Arts of Public Art, Art in Public Places Committee, we thank you for your good... Committee, we thank you for your good work, and I think, I hope you understand the fact that I put it on the, originally put it on the consent agenda is my way of saying, I think it just goes without saying that we approve, we like what you're doing, thank you very much, keep up the good work. Item B1, we will conduct a public hearing, we are now in the public hearing to receive citizen input on a replat of lots 21 and 22B, which is plus or minus 9.8665 acres in suburbia estates subdivision and plus or minus 3.5 acres out of the Nancy Blanke survey, absent, sorry, abstract number 98 located within Bastrop, Texas, one mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Item number B1 and B2 are in accordance with the local government code. Item number B1 is to conduct a public hearing, and B2 will be the action item of it. Essentially, this is an existing plat of suburbia estates, but they are adding some acreage to the back of it that wasn't part of the original subdivision, so.
So they, let's see, okay, so let's see the picture. They bought some more land, it doesn't appreciate will be changed anything they're doing except it's back, it's back behind, or where's the, where's the street? Give us the street. Oh, there's the street. So this is, it's that tiny little thing, and where do they, what's the addition part?
Let me move down here real quick.
Maybe I'm the only one that understands.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, unless, if it's a point of order or part of procedure, or if it's on this item, you can ask anybody.
Are these, it's all.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll ask, now ask Melissa that question, you've got a report there.
I'm just asking the people doing the comprehensive plan or got their names on documents here before us.
This is the same firm, yes, the half associated is quite a large engine firm. This isn't the same people that are working on us with our comprehensive plan, but it is.
Different part of the big part.
It is.
Has to be the same logo.
Got the same name.
Same name, I didn't say it wasn't the same name, it's the same company, but it's a big one. I don't know, does that matter?
Y'all tell me, y'all want to talk about being transparent every meeting, I'm just asking.
So are we, so you got a question along those lines?
Um.
Okay, go ahead.
I was, sorry, Mayor, Council, I was going to back up a little bit. These are the original lots of suburbia estates, you can kind of see the squaring off here. The lots do face 71, and they are adding this acreage to the rear onto what will now be this, you know, continuation of this lot, 22B1.
Sorry, didn't lay them back behind there anyway, if they don't have it right.
It is.
Okay, I think I understand.
And I'm sorry, just really quickly, I handed out a response that I received after the packet sent out, and they are in favor of the request.
Is, this is McCrack, McCrack Cal, McCrack?
Yes.
Is he, is James, somebody here? Okay, no. All right, so we, they say they're in favor of the request. Anybody want to speak to this one way or the other? It's a public hearing, anybody in the world's welcome to come forward, speak for up to three minutes. Councilmembers? You got any more questions, Willie? I'm closing out the hearing. We're now at item B2, this is discussion, consideration, and possible action by the city council on a replat of lots 21 and 22B being plus or minus 9.8665 acres in suburbia estates subdivision and plus or minus 3.5 acres out of the Nancy Blanke survey, abstract number 98, located within Bastrop, Texas, one mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's open for a motion.
I move to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Schiff, seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? Ann, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso.
Yes. So, item D1, consideration, discussion, and action, possible action regarding the creation of a charter review committee. Steve, would you distribute, I have some items to distribute for the press and the council. Steve and I are proposing, I'm going to read this for the public, I don't know if we can get this up on the screen, but probably not, it's pretty clear. We had conversation, and I had a conversation with a, with Councilmember McAnally via email, and so on a report from her that her opinion was, I think, the same as mine. We're the two people that were on the council when we had the first Charter Review Commission. Were we all getting one of those? Are they?
They're coming.
And so what we're proposing here is that we, wrong one. Oh, oh, this, oh, I'm sorry, do we have, everybody have one? Oh, wait, 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 okay, we got two things coming. These are some of case responses, I think I've reflected that accurately. We could not find, the staff near the mayor could find a record of the vote of this in our minutes, so, but fortunately, Councilmember Peterson discovered the name of the Charter Review Commission on page 23 of our charter. Oh, 33? I apologize, I wrote down 23, I was mistaken, it's 33. And that was a list of those who produced recommendations to the council that resulted in a special election in November of 2010. Those members were Jeff Yarborough, Karen Pennard, Reverend R.D. Smith, Debbie Moore, Lisa, Hank Sinek, you told me how to say that, Tank, but I gave as close as I could get, Camilio Chavez, Brandy Smith, Willie Del Rosso, and Ken Kestlis. So I called Mayor Orr, and we talked a good while, and I think we very clearly are sure that we reconstructed from our memory the process that we used to come up with those particular names, and they were the following. The mayor appointed and the council approved a council member as the chair, and that was Ken Kestlis. Each council member made one appointment as follows. Karen Pennard was appointed by Ken Kestlis, Reverend R.D. Smith by Bill Peterson, Debbie Moore by Kate McAnally, Elisa by Julie Hart, and Cam Chavez by Joe Beal. The mayor also made a single appointment. The council, however, allowed Mayor Orr to make up to two other appointments of qualified citizens if he felt that one or both would have helped the commission better reflect the overall nature of the citizenry, and his appointments were Willie Del Rosso, Brandy Smith, and Jeff Yarborough. So Steve and I are recommending that the council approve the same process as outlined, and that we set a deadline of August 9 for council members to turn in their appointments, and that at that point, we can elect, or we can do it tonight, one of you to be the chairman of the commission. So that's our recommendation, and we leave it in your hands. So, so you're volunteering for that? First, we've got to decide if we're going to use the same process.
Process looks good to me.
Uh, let's, if, let me, let's have, if there's a motion to use the same process as before, as outlined by the memory of Mayor Orr and Mayor Kestlis, and the list that we, working from the list we have in the charter, let's have a motion for that, to use that same process. Well, either way, yeah, you can ask it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that we use the same process as was used on the last Charter Review.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Willie? Oh, Billy, you want to say anything? Did everybody want to say? Willie, here.
So, so each member of the council is going to make one, and you're going to make three appointments?
Well, if, the, what we did before was, no.
Yeah, no.
That's one appointment by the mayor, and if the mayor, and I think if you're concerned about it, one thing's, one tweak I think we could make would be if the mayor believes or council members, you know, advise the mayor, and the mayor decides, we need, for example, there's nobody on the west side of the river, or there's no young person on there, because we're all working independently, that the mayor could, let's say, recommend somebody or appoint somebody with approval of the council for those other two or one positions, depending on, could be, there's no need, but it would allow the option.
How many were going to have on together?
There would be a total of nine or seven, depending on whether the mayor does the other two. And the reason we did that was, again, let me just say, if we're working independently, there's no way to coordinate anything, because we're all thinking of who we want. So that would allow the possibility of, and let me just revise it, I have no problem with that, that the mayor could take advice about, do we, are we deficient in some element of our community? And I gave a couple of examples. And then the mayor could make an appointment that would have to be approved by the council, just like a board fund. Or, or make some, if you want to make a change to it, just want to get us moving. And I mean, Kay and I talked about using the same process as last time, we were the two that were on the council at that point, and that's why, and that's why we came up with this. So we're, the motion is to approve the same process as last time, and then we'll move that too if we have a chair. Let's call the roll on that.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso.
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff.
Yes. We've got a volunteer for the chair if somebody wants to make a motion, or you can move somebody else, they'll be up to y'all.
I'll make a motion that Gary chairs that committee.
Is there a second?
Bill seconds.
Any other nominations? All right, let's, let's call the roll on, we're now filling one of those seven, oh, seven or nine spots with, devoting to whether to put Gary Schiff as the chair of the commission.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso.
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff.
Let me think about this a second, let me just say, what just happened?
You can abstain, and we will stand. Okay, Ann, will you please notify all council members? We need to get those, their names in by, say, the 9th, I think is what we talked about. And then we'll, we'll take a look at it and decide whether we need anybody else or not. It'll be a seven, eight, or nine committee commission.
Could I ask, could I ask something?
Of course.
As, as we get the, the names of the people turning in to the city manager, and y'all look at those, I hope you can go back to what you said, if the area was too concentrated only in center part of town, that we reached out in different areas of the community.
Well, I'll give you an example, Brandy Smith was on that commission, and she was put on there by the mayor because she left, she was the only person, no one from the west side of the river was on.
On the cross.
On that commission, and so he appointed Brandy to represent the west side, and she lived at Hunter's Crossing.
Karen and Dee.
And I put Karen on there for that reason. I waited until everybody had put their names in and asked Terry, and I put Karen on because there was nobody from Tish. Okay, thank you all. Item D2 is discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve the final plan for Pecan Park, Section 5B, consisting of 43 residential lots totaling plus or minus 12.63 acres out of plus or minus 311.302 acre tract out of the Moses Rousseau survey within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, located west of Perkins Street. Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Pecan Park, Section 5B is located on the, sort of the eastern side of the entire Pecan Park development. It's tying into the existing Section 5A, which is under construct, well, the homes are under construction in Section 5A now, and Section 5B would be located just west of that. This is sort of a zoomed in view, you can kind of see, Section 4 is almost completed as far as the infrastructure is concerned, and you'll be coming to council soon for acceptance of that. So this is just an overall view of the layout of the lots. It's 43 lots on roughly 13 acres. All the utilities are, well, the water is coming from Section 5A, the sewer utilities are draining through Section 5B to a lift station site that was built with Section 5A, located in the southeast part. So with, with that, the major point of conversation with this development has certainly been the drainage layout. Now, I certainly want to thank Mr. Del Rosso for the efforts that he's gone to to help communicate the concerns that the adjacent property owners have expressed throughout the development of the Con Park. Because of all that, and the neighborhood meeting that was held a little over a week ago, the developer has come back and proposed an amendment to the plans that, or to the construction plans that we have on file for the development. And that plan is calling for sort of a rerouting and realignment of the drainage system that was originally proposed. This map kind of shows an overall layout of the existing drainage plan, which is what we have on file today, and it basically includes all of the piping that would be installed with Section 5A that's shown here in the red, and then it would tie into this blue area, which indicates a drainage channel, that's an open channel, that's, that would take water from 5B and tie it into an existing channel that was built with Section 5A, and tie it into what many people call the middle bottom area, which is sort of a shelf that separates the higher elevations around here with the floodway and the flow lines of the river, Colorado River. So that's sort of what we have on file now, that's what's gone through the full review process, and what we've received from the developer is, is a change that would basically connect to the proposed outfall pipe for Section 5B, which would come through this area, and instead of having the channels that are, that are either built today, which runs along this, in this area, and the proposed channel that would be installed in this area, it would actually, he would actually install a pipe system that would be designed to accommodate the drainage from not only Section 5A and Section 5B, but also some future sections that are going through our review process now. And it would also call for filling in the existing channel that's right roughly in this area and replacing it with a pipe system that's located further to the west, and also angle the last piece of the system to where the water would actually discharge more in a southwesterly direction, which will allow that water to better flow along its natural flow path, which is from this area further to the west before it ultimately goes to the, to the river. That's, that's the gist of what the developer's proposed as an amendment. We would certainly recommend that any approval from council, because this is just relatively schematic in nature, we would recommend that any approval be contingent on the developer submitting detailed construction plans on how this will, this will physically lay out.
To be approved by who?
It would be approved through staff, through our department.
Can you show us where Perkins Street is?
Perkins Street is right in this area.
Where's that gizmo that's a lift station or something?
Yes, sir. It's this kind of shaded area right here, I'm kind of covering up with that Section 5B layer.
Okay, so I've seen pictures of water just flowing like crazy down Perkins Street and down the old Hills Prairie Road, it looks like it's coming off of that, that property, and I've been out there and seen this berm that's been built up, which I would think would have stopped that water, but I can't imagine the berm is going to stay permanent because there's a bunch of street going to go in there that we're requiring, and so how does that, how does that stop that from happening?
Well, the berm is, is.
I mean, not the berm, but the whole gizmo. I mean, can you explain it to me in sort of dumb person's language? I mean, can you explain it to me in sort of dumb person's language that I might understand?
So with Section 5B, the design calls for, obviously, the street infrastructure along with a, an underground drainage system that would be designed to collect all the water that would have drained to Perkins Street as, as it is today. But collect it and actually route it to, and, you know, according to our initial plans that we have on file, it would route it to the, the channel in this area. And so it, all of these, the drainage system would be built with street curb inlets that would actually capture that water and get it into an underground-
That all go like from the riverside, but it could flow up, flow away from the river till it gets to those pipes?
Well, the way this is designed is the elevations decrease from a high point roughly in this area, and it, and it drains easterly towards Perkins Street.
I'm sorry, show me Perkins again, I'm glad I lost Perkins.
Perkins Street is, is right here.
Oh, okay.
The lift station that was built with Section 5A is-
So from Perkins Street, it flows west into those pipes?
Well, because of the grade differences, water wouldn't actually flow from Perkins Street this direction, it would actually flow along Perkins Street, uh, the way it's done.
Didn't that was producing that, maybe I didn't, looked at me like an awful lot of water going down that street?
Yes, sir.
So, you're saying we're going to leave that as is?
Well, it would, Perkins Street wouldn't necessarily have much in the way of improvements except for the intersection improvements. Where the, the reduction in runoff would occur is when the water is, that is trying to flow that direction, it would actually be captured in a, in a, with a inlet system that would direct that water underground and route it back.
And how far is that pipe from Perkins Street?
Uh, it's probably a hundred feet, maybe a hundred and, I think these are sixty feet.
And would, and would any of that hundred feet, would the flow go west or would it all go east?
Well, any water that is right here, according to the design, would flow east of Perkins Street. And the, the key to the design is that the engineer designs it so that the amount of water that was going there historically, which is roughly this area, I could, there, there is a much greater amount of area that was draining Perkins, uh, in its predeveloped state compared to what is designed to drain after it's developed. But it, it might help, in your packet, you have, uh, you should find a letter from the developer's engineer that talks about that. It goes into much more detail about the amount of acreage and the amount of runoff that is estimated to be flowing from the site in its existing condition, and compare that to the proposed condition.
And you found that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, back, uh, back to what the mayor was talking about, so yeah, you decided there's nothing that you can do to improve the open ditches on, on Perkins Street to stop the water from going across the street into the other neighbors across the street over on Perkins?
Well, I, I certainly think that's something we could look at and potentially clean up. I, I would call that more of a maintenance issue and not so much a construction issue with, with this section.
And you're asking who to do that?
Uh, it, it, it could probably be done during construction, you know, the contractor's going to be-
Well, I mean, now's the time to decide that. We're not going to just sit there and think, well, we might do that down the road. Tonight's the night to decide what we're going to do on this. Because he's made, he's made some changes to another plan concerning the channel and the piped-in channel and the flow away from another property owner, but that's just part of it. You need to address what's going to happen on Perkins Street. And we need to know that tonight before we make any, any, any consideration on improving the final plan.
This, the way this, this section is designed, it's designed that in its developed state, less water would be flowing towards Perkins Street than, than it was in its existing state, predeveloped state.
And, and we determined that by means of what?
Uh, just general engineering practices that, that look at the area, the drainage area as well as the, uh, the roughness of the area, so comparing a forested area to a, you know, a, a developed property, you would expect much more water to be flowing from that developed property and it'd be flowing at a much faster rate than it would in a, in a undeveloped state. And so, uh, there's, there's general, uh, our ordinances describe the general practices that are done and taken into account when it comes to how much runoff leaves the site in its existing state versus what, what should leave it once it's, uh, once it's developed.
Is the current drainage that's there as designed and submitted, was it completed prior to the last rain event, big rain event we had?
Yes, it was.
So, any issues that, that, that happened from that rain event were, happened according to the designs?
No, sir, the, the concern that was made, that we were made aware of after the storm we had on, I believe it was April seventeenth, that was the first major storm we had that came through the city, we realized that this area that encompasses the access road that was put in as part of Section 5A that, that we required the developer to put in, as well as some additional fill material that was placed in this area just throughout the construction process, was actually causing an issue with, uh, water flowing, not, not being able to flow from the north to the south down into this area as it normally would. Instead, it came and kind of hit this area and made its way into this area. And so it, it sort of caused the water to be blocked in this area. And that, that's why we saw the more concentrated flow coming from here. And so that's what, ever since we were made aware of it in April, we've been working with the developer and his contractor to mitigate that and alleviate those concerns. We, the, the contractor built a temporary ditch that carried water from this area down to the existing channel that was built with the previous section. They also did put this berm across the access road and also built a little, another swell that would force that water to, you know, travel down to where it, where it is historically.
That's February, right?
Yes, sir.
Debra?
So are the same standard practices that you're implementing here the ones that we implemented around Buc-Ee's and all these other places that we had flooding?
Well, it, it, it depends on the site. Keep in mind that these, these developments are, are designed under our subdivision ordinance, which was adopted, most of the requirements that applied to, to these developments were, were adopted in two thousand and seven. And so if the site was developed before two thousand and seven, it would have been, it would have fallen under some different regulations that apply to, to developments.
So you would approve, you would approve regulations that were not applicable, that didn't, you know, what about the study we had done in twenty-eleven? That was never, that was never implemented, that was, we spent all, we approved that and it was, or the council approved it, I wasn't on the council, but it was never implemented. So we're going off an old study, never implemented, the one from twenty-eleven, and then we're wondering why these people's properties are flooding? This doesn't even make sense to me.
Well, I think that, are, are you referring to the S-Stat report from twenty-eleven? That, that report actually encompassed a different area of the city, it didn't actually include the area that is within the-
Now, I know it's not for this area, but I'm just saying that we have more updated reports and they've, it's just never been implemented. And so, and then you're showing the same thing here, you're using old reports and it looks like it's not working.
Well, we're just using the subdivision ordinance that defines the rules that apply to developments with anything from drainage to water and sewer utilities to streets and-
Do you think that's adequate?
Uh, I think for the most part they are, I mean, they can always be improved, and that's one thing we're-
Do the citizens there think it's adequate?
Yes.
I mean, because this is the part that's really surprising, the phone calls that I get, and there's citizens that are coming forward and they're being real specific about areas where this isn't working. And I don't understand why we're not engaging them in this. It's like every citizen that, that experienced flooding had very specific recommendations about what it was, what could be done, what was acceptable to them, and I don't, um, I mean, are we considering that? I mean, because I see a lot of people out here that aren't very happy about this.
I, I can describe the effort that's, that's been undertaken to address the concerns of the property owners. This is the original drainage plan that I spoke about earlier, and this is the, the proposed amendment that the developer submitted that would, uh, do many things that we were told were concerns from the, from the neighborhood meeting that was held a little over a week ago, as well as just the, the conversations I've had with the, the adjoining property owners. This would not only fill in the channels, the existing channel that runs in this direction north-south, and not require the proposed channel, but it would, it would get all of that runoff into an underground pipe system. It would also include a drainage inlet that would collect water that was previously building up. This is sort of a local low spot along Perkins Street, and it would route all of that down to the, uh, to the shelf area adjacent to the, to Colorado River.
So this, this proposed change here, this wasn't offered at the neighborhood meeting when y'all were here before?
A, a variation of it was. The, the variation that was presented by the developer was very similar to this, except that the, the piping system ended roughly in this area. And so it's been changed to reflect extending the pipe system further to the south and angling it to where the discharge point is, that number is a hundred and seventy-two feet. So it would be a hundred and seventy-two feet west of the adjacent property owners.
While you're there, is that, does that pipe go to the river?
It, it, it discharges into a middle shelf area that would, would discharge water into an area that, that eventually would drain.
How far would it be to the river?
Well, I don't think it drains to the river.
And, I mean, your question was, does it drink to the river? And you answered, no.
Right, then go to the river.
And, and the reason for that is, is after discussing this with the developer's engineers and just in my opinion, you would actually risk more damage and more risk of erosion and, uh, maybe not flooding impacts, but you would, you would be connecting this system directly to the river in a way that I think would not provide the same benefit as discharging it into this area where it's a natural just area where water can, can spread out and soak in the ground more effectively and, and be less, be more independent of the impacts of the, of the river. Which, I, take it to your question, Mayor, the, the, the flow line of the river is in reference to this.
So, I mean, I, I'm not sure I follow what you're saying. We've got a pipe, I don't know, I'm no engineer, obviously, but up, up river from the boat docks, on the other side of the river, there's this pipe sticking out. It's been there for years, and it's not corroding anything, it's just sticking out and looking, it goes into the river. So I don't understand why you would have more erosion if the pipe goes out on the ground than it goes straight to the river.
Well, there's, there's many instances where that pipe sticking out into the river does cause a tremendous amount of erosion. We're dealing with some neighbors on Bush Cove that are seeing that pipe. As the, the Piney Creek erodes away, it's actually causing part of that pipe to, to fall out and, and fail because of the, uh, the, the banks that are corroded away behind it. And so just-
There's probably a difference between being ten feet from somebody's backyard and being a hundred and forty feet down the riverside. I'm not sure that's a very good example, because I went down there and looked at it the other day. Uh, Bill, you need to go.
Yes, sir, I do. And we've talked about what the developer's doing, which I think they're doing the right thing on their, on their drainage. Let's get back to talking about Perkins Street, and that's what we need to be talking about, because these folks are getting watered over there. And if I'm not, if I'm correct, Perkins Street is a steady street, am I correct?
Uh, part of the way, the county line, I believe, is roughly in this area, and so everything north, but certainly the area that Beacon Park is-
Okay, uh, what I'm going to say is that, uh, we need to get back to maintenance as a city to clean these ditches, because right now Perkins Street elevation is higher than some of those homes over there, am I correct?
Yes.
And the runoff ditch that goes down the west side of Perkins Street is filled in with silt over the years, it's never been cleaned out. So the water has nowhere to go except across the street into these zones. So I look at it, just take care of maintenance down there, and that would keep a lot of water off these folks.
So that, that is certainly a good, good thing to look at from a maintenance standpoint, I guess.
Can I just ask a question? I, no, there's-
What, I'm, we're, sorry, what's your question?
I, I need to hear about four, there's 5A and 5B, where does four-
Can you explain that to the, to the crowd?
Can I finish Bill's question first?
Yeah, we'll, then we'll come back to this question, uh, because I didn't know what that was either. Go ahead.
What are you, when you, when you ask him, and I, I agree with you, that, that's why I brought up, you have to do something to the open ditch on Con, on Perkins Street, but what, what are you going to do about the rest of the part that, when you leave the city to go and go into the county? It, it, you got a section of that, I don't know, I don't know, I can't go stepping off tonight, but then it goes around the bend. I mean, we just can't say you're going to fix a little part of the city and forget about the rest of it. It goes out to the county and around that bend. Well, that's why the city and the county need to work together to get that water off these folks.
Well, I mean, the opportunity's here because the developer's putting in the subdivision.
Yep. So get, get some maintenance, get the county involved in this, and to where to work bigger on it.
So let me go back to the question, is Section 4 having anything to do with this?
Well, I'd like to know where the water goes since I'm dead next to this drainage.
Well, I'll let you talk a minute, Lynn, but I, but if Section 4, would you show me Section 4, see if I can figure out something for my questions, and I'll let Lynn speak a minute.
So Section 4 is located to the west of Childers Drive. Childers Drive will extend in this area, so-
And the pipe, can you show us more or less where the pipes go, as you've been showing?
Well, for Section 5B, they would be roughly in this area.
Okay, so could, the distance from there, okay. Uh, anybody else? Uh, then I need to call on, uh, folks in the audience. Uh, Mr. Duke, you want to say anything? Are you just available?
Well, you might need to address anything I, you have.
Okay, well, I'm going to put you on hold, and if we need a question from you, or you want to, uh, answer something or address something, you come on, it's your, it's your project. So you want to do it now, or you want to do it later? I don't, you, you're, I don't have any questions for you, and I don't think anybody else does, but if you've got something, let's hear it.
Oh, well, I, I know that you did ask, uh, ask a question, and I can get to, maybe the, right, whoa, right here, I think you asked about the water and stuff in Perkins. What we actually have done is we've extended, we've actually extended this pipe that's all underground out to main inlet.
That's where you said that natural low spot was?
Yes.
Okay.
So what, what's happening is you see the water and stuff that's coming down to Perkins, and it'll be captured here, which we're actually picking that water up, uh, at that point from Perkins and moving that water on down and through here, which is actually taking it away from here.
Running it the unnatural way to get it back to the river?
Sir.
Running it kind of the unnatural way to get it back to the river?
That's right.
Is that, is that right there on the corner?
I'm sorry?
That you showed back there is on, is that, on the corner of that street?
Yes, well, it's right out at the street, yes, sir. It's where the ditch and stuff is right now, that, that comes down the side of Perkins, and it becomes a collector, and we collect it at that point, and then pull it down through the piping system here, avoiding everything that has been coming down this direction for a number of years. Uh, we take also as well, I think what Wesley was trying to explain is there was twenty-three acres originally sliding down in this area and coming directly down into the river.
So you're right, you said shed water, you said sliding down, what?
Yeah, so shed water is probably a better adjective. So it was shedding water as it was coming on through it. Now we've reduced that down to eight acres. Uh, so we've, uh, reduced the amount of water and stuff, uh, that's coming from our project anyway. And we can't speak for the water and stuff that was coming down Perkins, but from our project, we've reduced from twenty-three acres down to eight acres. And then we've also put this collector in here, as well as piping, the old thing, all the way down into a point to drop the water into, uh, you know, the area to continue the drainage. the area to continue the drainage. So we've redirected, in our opinion, we've redirected the water.
Right. Okay. Let me call on Jacob Henry.
Council staff, thanks for your time. Can I use the?
I don't see why not, except technically, I don't know how to do it.
I, yeah, I asked Melissa beforehand. So, yeah, basically, Jacob Henry, I live in the south end of Perkins, one of the many that are directly affected with what we're talking about, so it's an important issue. I do want to thank Mr. Del Rosa for being proactive and working with the developer and improving from what we saw last week at our public meeting. But I still have issues. So what I'm going to do is just give you a quick rundown of the area, and make everybody understand, I guess, the reasons behind. And so this actually shows when... So this shows basically when they were doing a lot of the cut and fill work, which was the grade, which was causing the flooding. And I believe that, you know, to create this drainage ditch, they cut and filled the dirt here. And so like what was mentioned, all the rain that was falling in 5B was flowing this way, hitting this unfinished road, flowing out of Perkins, across Perkins, you know, flooding, shed here, coming down Perkins, so going across the street and coming down around and by our properties. And so I have two issues. The water was affecting us from the front or the north side, and then flowing through Ms. Wollene's property, in between her homes, and down into this middle bottom level. And so that's one item. The other is what was being channeled through the open channel beside her home, and then the outlet was here. And a lot of you have seen that, so I've got actually some pictures I want to show. You know, pictures worth a thousand words, and I think this will go to help all of us. And so this is basically during construction, obviously. This is kind of the unfinished road on 5B. I'm standing on Perkins, taking this picture. I'm going to go through these quickly, and then, you know, consider it... In the essence of time, so hopefully this will work. That's another picture, the same from Perkins, out the, that's the road looking across 5B, and you see the homes in the background, that's 5A. That's some of the sediment that was deposited, you know, on the roadside of the gate. I'll point out here that the sediment control, also known as silt fence, which was installed kind of late in the game, after some of the cut and fill was done, was left open right on that road. So that road acted like a river, and there was nothing to throttle the water back. This is down the edge of Perkins, looking south, going towards a corner. You can see the silt fence was totally destroyed. I have some concerns on the time that it was taking to fix the problem. Silt fencing is part of the SWIP Plan of the development, which is the SW3P, Stormwater Solution Prevention Plan. It's required.
Jacob, I need you to finish quickly.
I'd like for that to continue in pictures.
Y'all want to do that? Okay. I'm seeing nods. Keep going, Jacob.
I'll make it as fast as possible, sure. So this is the corner around. You can actually see the flow. It's quite significant. I'll show you a video real quick. We'll just get through this. This is looking at Ms. Wollene's gate. My property's on the left, water on both sides of the road, in the front yard. Can use that gate. This is it flowing across Ms. Wollene's Drive, basically creating a lake in front of her house, crossing the road. You can see the current. I'll show a video here. This is the result, basically sediment deposited. We had this multiple times. I'll point out, you know, we talked about one event on April 17. We've documented it in the pictures, videos, timestamp. This happened six to eight times, and it wasn't just the eight-inch rain. We had it at one and a half inch rain, two inch rain, so it is a problem.
Did it ever happen before?
No, no, not to this extent. I've never seen the ditch on the north side of Perkins before this Cattaguard pulled any water. And I think a lot of the neighbors can vouch for that, saying that it lived there longer than I have. I've lived there for 13, 14 years now. So, and then this is the drainage that was created. It was done very well. It looked good to start out with. This is the very end, down at the middle bottom. It had a gradual slope to the very end, and a steep shelf that dropped off. Well, obviously, when water hit it, it's sand. We had serious problems. That's it after the fact, after those rain events. And deposited an enormous amount. This is the water in what was called the middle bottom below our houses. So we've got water in front, goes through our homes, and collects in the lower bottom. This is obviously somewhat of a bowl. And that water, it's hard to tell, but I can tell you that the high grass is a couple feet deep. That's probably, and we'll say roughly, close to an acre, I don't know, three quarters of an acre. This tree line is Pecan Park's property line. This is kind of the edge of my property and Ms. Wollene's property. So, and just to, I'm going to jump to just a couple of the videos. This is on Perkins, right at the road, coming off of 5B. This is looking to the east, Mr. Namkins' property. This shows it going across the road, jumping the street, and going down the right side of the street here to the south, the way I'm, the direction I'm pointing. I'm going to hop through these pretty quick. We've already talked, I'm going to just jump to the Cattaguard area at the end of the road, the front yard. I'm going to pan around, so you can actually see the water moving. And I'll point out that this is backwater. This was backing up from Ms. Wollene's property, not flowing. You can see the bubbles aren't moving from the raindrops, and it's because the water was hopping the road directly up to the Cattaguard here. And you can see the sediment and silt.
The water's coming off of the...
It's coming from the...
...property from the north?
Well, it's coming down the street, wrapping around the corner where Perkins makes the bend and in the ditch, and then jumping. And I guess, the one other one I want to show is the amount of flow between the homes across, basically where it's going into the middle bottom. It's fairly significant. I think it's relevant here. So this is coming across Ms. Wollene's property, and the amount of water that's come down the street, and through, collecting in that middle bottom. So, and you can see the water in the grass. That's palm grass, probably a couple feet of water. And that's my property in the background there. So we hit it on the front side and the back side. Serious issue, obviously. You guys have seen it, some of you have been there. But I thought it was good for all the councilmen to see with their own eyes, so it's not just us talking. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
And I'll wrap up by just saying, you know, plain and simple, we're tired of being flooded. I don't know how many times we've been up here for this development, you know, the zoning issues, and, you know, we now have the sewage lift station right beside us. You know, now we've got flooding. I mean, we've just been constantly barraged with things that affect our property value, and, you know, it's not, we don't really consider it neighborly, and don't appreciate it, and so we're tired of it. So I hope the council will be proactive and not approve 5B until this issue is solved. Willie, I do appreciate your time, and I think that was an improvement by keeping that drainage further underground and directing it to the west. I think that will help. I'm not convinced they'll solve the problem, so I just ask that you guys keep that in mind in this topic tonight, in this agenda item, so.
Thank you. Mr. McDowell, have you addressed what we heard, or do you want to say anymore about it?
I just signed up to speak.
So are you working with Mr. McDowell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, you want to speak for him? Tracy Bratton, I'm calling.
I'm Tracy Bratton, going with consulting group, and an engineer. We were hired to do Section 6A, and the water from Section 5A and 5B is supposed to flow through 6A. That's where the, see, there's the pointer. This channel right here flows through 6A, and the proposed channel right here from 5B flows through 6A. And so part of what, we had done our design for this section when this issue came up, and we were asked to assist with it. And we made some modifications within our design to help accommodate this water. I want to not forget to talk about this issue, about where to discharge this pipe, about this middle bottom or near the river in there. But I can say, while I was not the engineer for 5A and 5B, I'm the engineer for literally thousands and thousands of residential lots across central Texas, and we saw tremendous problems this year, very similar to this, where something was partially built, and that's what happened here, this fill was in place, this fill up in here in 5B that was in place, but the drainage system wasn't put in yet. And what it did is it inadvertently directed water to a place that was never intended. The water that, and then, you see, Wesley, how do I get to the area that shouldn't be 5B? You had a map that had some existing tow behind it, yeah. This water was never intended in the developer's plan to get stuck right here and forced over to Perkins. It was supposed to get caught in the storm sewer system and then taken to the open channels, which we're replacing with closed pipes, and down to that middle bottom area. And that's what happened here, is this acted as a wall and pushed that water over into Perkins. It didn't have any other place to go, and down the street. The fastest way to remedy this is to approve and get the contractor started building this storm sewer system right away. That's the problem, is part of this was built with a fill before the other construction plans were approved and done. And that's an observation from projects we had in construction all over the place in central Texas this year. We had temporary erosion control fences directing water to wrong places. Again, this was not mine, but we had similar things happen with us as well. In this discussion about the direction to the middle bottom or all the way to the river, I've worked here in central Texas since 2004, but I cut my teeth in Houston, where we had bayous and discharged pipes into the bayous all the time. You have very specific issues when you discharge a pipe into a channel. One is the end of the pipe getting ripped off during flood flows, debris getting crushed in the pipe. If you get the pipe in an area where it's partially submerged during a flood, clogged with debris, and it's difficult to maintain. And depending upon the type of soils you have, you can have severe erosion problems at the end of the pipe. And if you look at most storm pipes, when you put them in, they put erosion controls in the pipe. Sometimes they're concrete blocks, which are energy dissipators, riprap, which is stone rubble at the end, to knock the velocity down and help protect the soil from being corroded. And it's very dependent on your soil type. If you're in a thick clay soil, you can discharge a pipe and not have a problem. This area, as you've seen from the pictures, with all the sediment there, it's very loose sand, it's very highly erosive. And if you discharge a pipe onto it, you can have erosion problems. In this area right here, what we are planning to do at the end of the pipe is to grate this out for another couple hundred feet to the west, to ensure that water is flowing to the west, which is what it does today. And in all the rain events that happened, there has not been erosion problems over here where that water diverges and naturally turns to go down to the river, because the vegetation is still in place. When we take and cut pipe through the bank of the river, especially with these loose, loo-able soils here, we disturb the vegetation, and the vegetation is what is holding the bank of the river up. And we also can't get in there to the bottom of the river if there is an erosion problem to fix it or repair it. So it is better, in my opinion, in my experience, to discharge the water up here, where, deep, deep into the flood plain. In fact, this is all in the floodway of the Colorado River. We have the opportunity to manage and control the water. The water comes out at the end of the pipe, is going to spread out very rapidly, a wide area across this way, and its height will drop. When that happens, the velocity of the water drops very, very quickly. And we can manage that area, and then it can make its way down to the river in a very slow, confused pattern. I think I hit on a major point there.
Did you say that the part you didn't design, the original part, wasn't designed right, or did you say that?
No, I'm not saying it wasn't designed right. I'm saying that back in this part, that what happened with some of the other construction, they had material, and they have a clomer, which is a conditional letter of map revision from FEMA, and I'm sure all who was involved in it, that was done years ago, that was probably approved through the city when it was done as well, as the local flood plain administrator. And it is allowing them to fill in these areas, to raise them up, to get them out of the flood plain. Well, they had this excess material, so they went ahead and started placing it. And it makes sense from an efficiency standpoint, what it did is it inadvertently dammed up this water, because it put that fill material there. This water normally wants to go, I'm trying to stay, this water wants to go this way, this wants to go this way, this wants to go this way, this wants to go here. Very wide and spread out. Well, what happens with that fill material in the road it was constructed, it comes down here, and it hits the road, goes like this. So all this water comes here and gets directed out where that road is, and that's where some of Jacob's photographs were from. And it was just, it happens to a lot of us, with all the rain this spring, and having temporary erosion sedimentation girls all the time. It wasn't completely thought through. What if we get a really big rain event, a really intense rain event, and we've just redirected that water, and we didn't have our storm pipes in yet? And so the solution to this is to get those storm pipes in place. It's there, that'll fix it. And at that point, instead of all of this area draining over here to Perkins, you're only going to have just the backs of these lots. And this storm pipe right here in the street will intercept all of that water and take it down this way into the system that we're designing. Does that make sense?
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm available if there is...
Yes. Do you have any, Kathy Thomas?
Some of you know me. I'm Kathy Thomas. I live at 712 Perkins Street, which is on the south end of Perkins. I've been a citizen of Austrac County all my life. I've lived in that location for over 20 years. I've actually spent my entire life there, because that was my grandparents' place. Historically, I've been there, I mean, 56 years now, Perkins Street has never had water on it. Even when we've had torrential rains, we've always worried about the river flooding our homes, but we've never had standing water on Perkins Street until the development started. When they started raising the elevation on the south end, southeast corner of that subdivision, they raised it almost six feet. So quite naturally, the runoff from that is going to come onto Perkins Street. I'm concerned that with the way the items have been presented to you all tonight, does not include the modified drainage system that goes through 6. If you approve the items that are on the agenda as they were presented to you tonight in your packet, then our drainage issues will not be resolved. So my concern is, again, and I'm asking council to include in your minutes his changed proposal to the drainage, that that be part of your direction to Mr. McDowell, to make sure he tries to rectify the issues that we've experienced with the torrential rains.
So Wesley, I'm going to ask you a question. Is there a, I'm sorry, I'm going to talk to you.
And I did want to say one more thing.
I'm sorry.
They mentioned that they're going to reduce the water onto Perkins Street from 21.6 cubic, or acres, down to 8.3 acres. If we've never had water before, why would that amount still be acceptable?
Thank you. So Wesley, my question is, do we have, I know at EDC, we have, when we give out grants and stuff, we always have a clawback feature. I don't know what you'd call that in this kind of business, but do we have a way in which we can guarantee that this will do what it says? And secondly, do we have a, somebody, I don't mean to ask that question, is there a way for us to, what happens if it doesn't work? What can the city do? Do we have to just take our chances, or?
Well, the engineer of record certifies that it will. And at the end of the project, that we expect, at the end of the project, that same engineer comes out and signs a concurrence letter that states that the development's been built according to the plan, so.
Okay, so here's our, you can get an engineer's payment up to write anything you want to. So how do we know that what they're saying is right, in the beginning or the end?
Well, on top of that, I mean, there's just a lot of time and effort put in by city staff to make sure that it's designed according to our... to make sure that it's designed according to our requirements, that when it's under construction, that it's inspected properly, and that when it's completed, we conduct walkthroughs and do our best to make sure that everything's been built according to the plans. And so there are many steps that are taken to ensure that subdivisions are developed with progress.
Okay, so your honor, here are our safeguarders. One last question for me. Somebody told me that they thought there was a problem that we had with the first part of this by not putting a time certain or a timeframe on something. I don't know if that's true or not, but is there, can you tell me about timeframes and expectations, they have to do this by this and all? Do we have some stuff built into this, to this final plat that relates to that?
Yes, sir. Our recommendation that's presented to you in our packet, which is Mr. Thomas indicated, is those packets were put together early last week, and so they do reflect the initial plan that went through our review process, that is still considered complete and compliant with our subdivision ordinance. And so it does not include, your packet does not include the plan I've talked about tonight, which, this is this plan. It does technically refer back to this plan, which again, still is considered compliant with our requirements. But also in your packet, you should see a proposed construction schedule that was provided by the contractor. And this is something we included in order to further clarify our position regarding the drainage system with the development. We're recommending that the plat be approved with the condition that a priority be placed on the drainage improvements. And the contractor submitted this schedule that we would ask to be, that we would be authorized to enforce the schedule and make sure that there are no unreasonable delays so that the erosion control can be installed right away, and then the site excavation and storm sewer system would be given the top priority of the initial phases of construction.
Deborah, then Willie.
What about, I, my understanding is that there's very strict rules about mitigation. So what I'm not understanding is, and maybe your engineer can address this, how it is that you can come in here and move all this dirt and put it in another location that's creating this wall. My understanding is that there's pretty stringent rules, especially around rivers, for doing that kind of moving. And you would know that if you've been working in Houston, because that's a huge issue. So why are we allowing this here?
The developer retained a number of years ago, I don't remember the exact year, a clomer, conditional weather map revision, and that's approved through FEMA, and that's what permits the fill inside the flood plain. Bastrop, the city Bastrop is our local flood administrator, you brought it in the county. So the city Bastrop would have been involved, as part of that approval, and signing off on it as the local floodplain administrator. So that's the permit that allowed the fill in general. My statement is, it's a question of timing. Once all of that's done, and all of the work's fine, there was a little snafu in the timing that got that fill put in, and then this plat, I don't know how long it's been here and been through the process and been delayed, but it really needed to happen at the same time as other constructions when that fills. And it's the lag of the time that's created the problem, but...
So you're saying that the delays that y'all experienced through the city itself created such a delay in the entire process that it subjected this neighborhood to flooding? I mean, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm not saying that, because I was not involved in 5B, so I don't know how long that was...
Is that what, is that what you think?
No, I think, if you're, are you asking me, or...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, I think basically what, in my opinion, you know, when we put the temporary road in there for the temporary piece, we divided the piece. The water came down the temporary road, but it came out of where the water went. Right now, I think what Tracy's going to be referring to is, we've been in this process for a month, we've lost a month of construction time, that we could be fixing this, and this is the solution to fix it, and that's what we're trying to do. That's what I can explain.
I want to correct, because in no way my intention implied this delay to the state's party. I don't know the timing. I know that they've been here a couple of times, and what I want to make everyone aware of is that, in my opinion, and I was the engineer of this section, that getting a storm sewer in is the solution to this, and the more delays in this process of approving construction, sorry, that storm sewer, the longer the delays, and that's the solution.
Willie, and then Gary.
Sir, let me ask you this question. Do you think the city was in error by not asking y'all to do this upfront, what you talked about, that's what you're bringing to us tonight, that storm rains? If it had been done in the very beginning, we wouldn't be here probably tonight?
I don't know that I'd go as far as to say that, and I prefaced my comments on this as well. It's not to throw Lynn, the engineer of 5B, under the bus, who, in 5A, where that construction started, because this happened to literally thousands and thousands of projects across central Texas in this region with the rainfall we had. Because you can do things like this, and we have projects out there all the time, they're partially built, we have silt fence here and temporary berms here and all this stuff, and it works well in a one-year storm event or two-year storm event. In fact, all those construction BNP's, the SWIFT items that Jacob referred to, are all actually intended only to handle a two-year storm event, and we got hammered. And I, myself and my firm saw all kinds of problems like this, and it was not predicting the amount of rainfall we were getting. Frankly, one of the things we deal with in engineering, there's certain standards of care. When you go to your physician, there's certain standards of practice, and they're not expected to anticipate everything. There's certain rules you're supposed to follow in engineering, and that very prescribed for this, here's what we're supposed to do, design some of these things, be just fine in a two-year storm event. Well, if we knew a hundred-year storm, that was common, we would have done it different. But our standard of care for most of these temporary drainage measures is the two-year storm.
Well, I know nothing about engineers, but that young lady that spoke before you said, and I'm going to ask this question, because I know it's standard price in the state of Texas, that no more water is coming across that street to their properties, it should have been no more after the subdivision started. I figured that out, I can figure that out. So I'm thinking back to my question, did the city or somebody fault itself by not asking the drainage to be put in upfront and put in right?
I think someone did not foresee what was going to happen with that temporary road.
So I want to take that as a yes. So Mayor, I got one other question, Mr. Kirby referred to that. The plan you probably got tonight is a good start, but what else is left? And there's plenty of engineers in the house tonight, so we can hear from everybody, but this young man has come forward and said, it's probably an acceptable plan, but it's not a total solution, and we're going to find a total solution here very quickly, or we're going to move on. But we need to figure out what we're going to do on Perkins Street that alleviates that problem down to that drain, and then address that new concept that y'all brought forward tonight. But Mayor, I hope we don't stay on this all night, we need to figure this out, and because I don't think we have, or our staff is convinced the neighborhood, you think this is the best plan here.
I've got Gary to call on, she can move you from previous question on Mr. P. R. Two. We're going to have a motion, but you can move it, and we quit talking.
I mean, I'd like to hear if there's anybody else, even our own engineer, what else, what else can they do? Because he didn't give me much answer on, I was satisfied with on Perkins Street.
Gary?
Yeah, the comments, I would have, number one...
Getting back to Perkins Street.
No women, Gary. Willie's asking if anybody in the house wants to talk about Perkins Street.
You know, I mean, you know, we have an engineer on staff, he didn't have any recognition.
You have anything else to say?
He wanted to find somebody who can fix Perkins Street.
Let's, I want to talk about Perkins Street, too.
All right, well, let's, can you all dialogue?
I'd like to just ask a couple of questions that might lead into where Willie's going, and that is, you know, number one, you know, what is the staging process of construction? It would seem to me that the drainage plan, it's basic infrastructure, because I see, I see the streets and the houses and all this stuff going up. It seems like the infrastructure should have been there before the houses were being built, and did I miss something here?
Well, the houses in this area aren't there. The only construction where homes are being built are in this section. And you're exactly correct, we certainly do not allow building permits to be pulled in areas that do not have the full infrastructure installed.
Okay.
And so that's all, all the homes are being built in this area.
So it was an area that was just in basic beginning of construction that was the cause of this problem?
Yes, I mean, the sewer lift station that was put in, that was considered an off-site improvement to Section 5A. It's located where 5B is supposed to be, but it was built with Section 5A because it was needed to support that section. And so it was, no houses are being built in Section 5B.
And I guess, secondly, my question would be, you know, the city is responsible for maintaining drainage along the streets, but if this development caused extra silt and things to get dropped into those, into those drainage issues, shouldn't we hold them responsible to clean it out?
They are certainly...
The city shouldn't have to do that?
No, you're exactly right, and they are certainly responsible.
Have you discussed that with them?
Yes.
And are they willing to do that?
Yes, they actively pursue getting it cleaned up, and they've continued to maintain it. We can always look at it and see if there's ways to improve. But yes, the contractor has worked in this area to clean up after all the silt and debris that left aside during all these rains.
Okay, so...
Okay, this is, this is what I think, I mean, I've heard that we have an engineer here who's willing to certify that once these drainage lines are put in, you're certifying that this is going to satisfy the movement of this water. Am I correct in understanding that? And also that you're going to take responsibility for cleaning out those ditches? And I just say that we make a motion to allow you to move forward, because I don't see how it's going to help this neighborhood if it keeps raining and we can't, if we don't do anything, it's going to flood again. But we've got two solutions here. You're saying that it's going to alleviate the issue?
You're free to make a motion if you want to, you don't have to, you know, you want to make a motion?
Well, yeah, but I'm asking you a question.
My firm, which is the final engineer for 6A, will certify, and we have none of the professional licenses online, but errors and omissions insurance, if we do something wrong, the drainage system for 6A is designed right. I can't take responsibility for the internal structure within 5B, because that's not my design or my firm's design. I will tell you, my opinion as a professional engineer is, this system that, you know, going the wrong way, this is designed within here. If that engineer did his job, and he has a professional license and insurance online, and it's been approved, this internal system has been approved by Wesley, with your staff, engineer, and professional engineer, and looked at what's going on, if they're saying this is right, this is going to intercept about three-quarters of the water that was coming to Perkins and redirected into the system that I am certifying. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I make a motion that we allow these people to get started on this, so that all this flooding can be alleviated, because it sounds like you've got a plan, and it's certified, they have E and O insurance. If it doesn't work, they're going to have to come in and compensate all these people. Is that the way that works?
So Wesley, you need a motion to approve the final plat, is that what you need?
Yes, our recommendation is that the plat be approved, but that staff is authorized to enforce the construction schedule that was provided by the contractor, and also to base approval on getting the plans for this new piping amendment to be further detailed and a full set of construction plans to be provided. Because right now, just with the, with the timing, this is all that was able to be prepared by the engineer. And so obviously, this isn't enough information to actually construct the pipe system with, and so we would just want to make sure that we pursue and work with the developer and their engineer to get a detailed...
I make a motion that we move forward with Wesley's plan.
So I got a second from that, and just to say that, how do you, how do we know that you're going to actually do that? That's your responsibility to follow through on that?
Yes, it's my job as...
Any other, any other discussion?
Turn your mic on, please.
In your motion, were you talking about just that one, this proposal on the drainage plan, or did it include Perkins Street as well?
Would you repeat, I think you wanted to move what Wesley said, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Would you please repeat, Wesley, what do you think the motion should include?
So we're recommending that the plat be approved, which would allow construction to proceed, with the condition that we are able, we're authorized to enforce the construction schedule that's been provided by the contractor, that's in your packet, as well as pursue and make sure that we receive a detailed set of construction plans for the proposed drainage plan provided by the developer.
So it never addressed Perkins Street?
So we have a motion on the floor, you can ask anything you want. You want to ask about Perkins Street?
So you want to go forward without addressing Perkins Street?
Well, I mean, in my opinion, this design does do a lot to address Perkins Street because of the inlet. Now, the cleaning out, the ditches are twofold. Obviously, the contractor that's working on the site would be responsible for cleaning up any problems or debris or silt that left the site as a result of either the work that they've done or the work that they didn't do, whether it's maintaining erosion control. But then past that, if it's a full, looking at other areas of Perkins Street just to help them flow better, that's, that's an issue that we need to work on in-house. It's not, it doesn't really, that's something we would need to do anyways, regardless of if this is...
Is the approval of the final plat of 5B independent from the drainage? Is it done integral to the development of 5B, or is it one thing, is it, are they two separate issues? Is the drainage...
No, the final plat is the last step of the review process that includes the construction plans, and that is what gives the, gives staff the ability to allow the developer to proceed with the construction of all the improvements, which include the drainage system, it includes the water, the sewer, the streets, and basically all the infrastructure needed to bring that development into a condition where homes could be, could be built on it. And before the plat is actually recorded at the clerk's office, which actually, which is what legally defines the lots and allows the developer to sell the lots so that building permits can be issued, all of this has to be done.
Okay, so I guess I would refer back to the homeowners in the area, just look at the homeowners in the area and say, you know, if we don't approve this and they don't move forward, the drainage, are you better off if they don't do anything than if they install a drainage system? You think you're better off without a drainage system? Kathy, I'd ask you that.
What my concern is, is y'all are approving the second period of the...
Yeah, if you'll get up to the mic, we need to get on there for the TV.
What my concern with that is, is he's asking you to approve 5B, and then the developer is going to put together a plan for this drainage system to still come forward to the engineer for review and approval. So if you approve 5B tonight, he can begin construction on 5B. But the drainage in six is not approved yet by the engineers. This is just a proposal.
Right, but they're not going to be able to build anything until they get the drainage, we've heard that the drainage has to be done first, following that schedule.
Right, okay, but if you approve 5B tonight, that's giving him the okay to go ahead and start his construction. He'll start the drainage and streets in 5B, but what is the timeframe of presenting the plat for the drainage in six, engineers reviewing it and going back and forth, and then it coming before council for approval? That's my concern on what the time span is going to be before he does this, which will fix the majority of the flooding onto our properties.
Wesley, can you address that?
The reason I worded my recommendation the way I did is, the final plat doesn't necessarily give the developer the right to just start building something tomorrow. We still have to issue the notice to proceed that allows the developer to start construction. There's still things that have to happen, and this would certainly be one of those issues that would need to be addressed before the developer can start construction. My recommendation is that with the approval... I, my recommendation is that with the approval, there's also the condition that this be submitted, reviewed, and approved by staff before construction takes place.
And to me, that makes sense that you develop the drainage, you design it, you install it, and then you phase into your construction. I don't know, I don't know how we could do this drainage. I'm looking for somebody to tell me that, you know, we shouldn't do this because if we just leave it alone, if we leave it alone, you're going to get, I'm guessing you're going to get flooded again. I think we need to approve it so we get some drainage over there and as quickly as possible. And that they do this before they go, that the city watches the process and that they get the drainage properly designed and installed before they move to the next phase of actually constructing houses on those lots.
Well, I make a motion that we move forward according to Wesley's.
Wait a minute, you got a motion on the floor? You're going to withdraw?
I do, but I want to, let me just, may I please finish? I make a motion that we move forward according to your recommendations with a, with specific attention to cleaning out those, that area along Perkins Street. Is that acceptable to you?
Are you withdrawing your original motion? I can't have two motions on the floor.
Yes, I'm withdrawing my original motion and I want to add to it that we pay specific attention to Perkins Street and getting those areas cleaned out over there. So just I wanted to expand that a little bit.
And your bill's seconding it. Steve, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Everybody clear? I think we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Thank you all. Item D3, this is the first reading of an ordinance at the City Council in the City of Astor, Texas, amending definitions number 75 and numbers 270.1 and adding a new definition, number 77.1, in appendix A3 in chapter 14 of the City of Astor, City of Astor zoning ordinance for the term custom personal service shops to include derma pigmentation services as accessory use to barber slash beauty shop uses and add definition of derma pigmentation, AKA permanent.
I make a motion that we accept this as.
Providing, I got to read that whole thing at least, Deborah. Providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a first reading. You want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this as submitted by Melissa.
There's a second. You're being, are you interested in having this part of your motion then be on the consent agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
All right, is there a second? Everybody understand the motion? Please call the board.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson? Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
No.
All right. Out of D4, the citizens and the council will be aware that we've had considerable conversation on this subject. We had a long backup on the city agenda. A couple of weeks ago about this issue, the BEDC has offered to purchase the property on 921 Main Street from the city. Councilmember Jones has asked to put this on the agenda, and I will turn to her.
I would like the city to turn this property over to BEDC to remediate. One thing I do want to ask about is, and maybe you can answer this for me, in y'all accepting this, I'm not, I want y'all to look at highest and best use, setting up committees, hearing the citizens, you know, all that kind of stuff. I mean, I can't tell you to do that, but I think that there's the understanding that BEDC is going to be able to take this project all the way through and definitely get input. But my concern is that, at least for the properties on either side of that, that the city still maintains some sort of responsibility for that and not just put all of that onto the BEDC, you know, as far as damages.
Well, let me comment on that before you start. I think, I think you can, you need to form your motion that way that what we had, you don't have to accept, you don't have to have a motion to accept the BEDC's offer to purchase the property. But either they're going to own it or not. And so if they're not, we need to figure out who owns what and who owns what liability. So you might be thinking about that for a possible motion while Sean speaks to us.
Yeah, the board discussed this at the last board meeting. I didn't include it in my update because I gambled that I'd be standing here tonight. The, what the board reiterated in the meeting was if the city council elected to accept our offer to acquire the site, that phase one of the project, as we've described it to the board, is what we would initially prescribe for, which is the architectural and engineering necessary to do the remediation, participating with the Main Street, Main Street Director and the THC Town Square Initiative Program, which is ongoing. And then at that point, looking at what the highest and best use for the community is and receiving input, and the board reiterated this, no final decision has been made beyond that point of what the use of the lot should be. So the board's interest is to acquire control of the lot, do the architectural engineering and remediation, and then participate in the THC TSI program to determine what that highest and best use is. And then once the community has provided that input and everybody's had a chance to participate in that, the board will make another decision on how to move forward beyond what I term as phase one of the project. And I believe that's described what the board reiterated at the last board meeting.
Am I correct that, that the BEDC would, is prepared in this offer to accept liability and responsibility for fixing whatever needs to be fixed? In other words, whatever liability or responsibility the city has, this entity of the city, BEDC, would take on that same liability and same responsibilities?
I believe that would be a correct statement.
Do you feel like that that's appropriate?
I don't think, see how two people can own a piece of property. What we're trying to get rid of the responsibility and liability is we don't know what to do with it. And we've been trying for months. So these people have come, this other board has come to us and said, we'll take that off your hands. We will take that liability and that responsibility off your hands. And we know how to deal with these kind of properties. This group here is, we've proved, we don't know what to do.
No, I know. And I'm actually asking you this in response to some citizen comments that I got about offloading all the responsibility to BEDC, that your job is to create jobs and not pay all these damages if there's like some huge issue along the way. So I'm just bringing that up, you know? And I mean, if that's the way that this needs to be done, that's fine because I definitely want you to take this over because we're just, we're done with it.
We've heard the same comments and, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy and if the council decides to allow the EDC to accept the offer to acquire the lot. I think the reassurance back to those people is the board has made no decision beyond the remediation, beyond the THC TSI program and what the ultimate end use of the site, the lot, is going to be. I believe, if I can provide guidance to the council on this matter, I believe that the motion to be made is to instruct the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with BEDC to accept their offer so that this issue doesn't come back to the council for additional consideration.
Okay, then I make a motion to instruct the city manager to draw a contract according to what he's requested.
There's a second. Willie seconds. Anybody got anything to say? Deborah? Deborah Johnson?
This is not a statement of opinion as to whether BEDC should do this or not. This is to point out that there was no information in your packet on this item. I do believe a couple of meetings ago that Councilwoman Schiff moved, and I believe it was Councilwoman Jones, seconded that an appraisal be done of this property. And I didn't see an appraisal in the packet. I have not seen any kind of written proposal from BEDC as to what it is they're planning on doing. It's my understanding from one of you on the dais, told my husband at a funeral, that the owners knew this problem when they purchased it. And the city made them an offer, the city had a survey done, had someone come out and look and see what it would take to remediate it, and made an offer. And it was not accepted. This information has not come out anywhere before. I just think it's got to be very difficult for you guys to make an informed decision when you don't have any information to look at. And it's very difficult for the citizens who purchased that property and who feel for the property owners who are being impacted on it, who also have opinions on how it should be done, not to see any information. So before you make any actions, where's your appraisal? And what is it that BEDC is actually proposing to do? Someone have a question?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. Consideration, discussion, and possible action, council setting funding amount for our hot funding for 2017. Do you have a, shout out a, oh, who is it? It's Tracy, you got a, you got a figure for us? Recommended figure?
Yes. So in the past, we have allotted $300,000 for this tier of funding. Earlier this year, I believe in April, we did do a resolution to move the visitor center to tier one funding, which we took $75,000 along with that to cover that contract. So we are proposing $225,000 to be used for this tier of funding this year.
Two?
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
I moved that we approved $225,000 for the hot fund tier two, was it tier two for this year?
Is there a second? Is there a second? There's a second. I don't see anybody rushing to the mics. Ann, will you please call the board?
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
I'm going to, after some comments on D6 and D7, I'm going to postpone those for another meeting. I want you to read D6 carefully. We did a good, I think, effective job with the council on trying to straighten out and update some overlaps and so forth that we have on our ordinance about the, regarding city attorney and other attorneys. One of, for example, is that our, our ordinance says that the mayor appoints and the council approves city attorney. But that was written in 1995 before our charter. Our charter says the council does it. So there's another, a number of other things, it's mostly cleanup, but I want you to take a careful look at it. Also, I want you to think about the fact that we've been talking about having a sign ordinance for a very long time, a review of it, we've never done anything. I think it's time for us to just get a bunch of folks in the room that use signs and know about signs and have to pay for signs and let them wrestle this to the ground and put some common sense approach on it with some of our staff. So I will bring that up in a future meeting. Item D8, is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding J.C. Brown, city attorney, Councilmember Jones.
I'd like to direct the city manager and the mayor to hire an interim attorney until further direction from the council.
So is there a second to this?
I'll second.
So when, so between then, Steve and I would get together, make sure he's not without an attorney or we're not without an attorney, start as soon as we can. And then we'll get back to y'all with plans for what's next. Sure.
So you and the manager are going to pick a person?
So ready for a short period of time? I mean, I would, as short as possible, what do you think? So we can get something on the ground where we can, I don't want, we need to have a, we have to have a city attorney. And if we have a city attorney for a couple of weeks or whatever, then we'll come up with a process, I would assume from what you're saying, to vet or whatever, and then y'all will hire a city attorney.
So how many names are you going to bring back? Just one person or?
Oh, I think we'll talk to you, take whatever advice we've got. I don't want him eight o'clock tomorrow morning without an attorney. So we're going to work on that, try to figure it out. But I mean, I'm not going to go along just hiring an attorney, go and hire one back.
Well, I've got to have some legal advice. And so I need to know what y'all want me to do for legal advice.
This is just a stopgap measure, I think, that would allow us to, would allow Steve to get somebody in place. Let's just say at the latest by the, I know you'll be gone, but we'll have a plan by the August 9th meeting, if not next Tuesday, to, to have a plan where we figure out who we're going to get, how we're going to get them, and what we're going to do.
You did not have a plan at night?
No. Let's, okay, we got a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there, is there a second? All right. Gary seconded, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Gary.
I'm here.
Gary seconded the motion, and I'm going to, hang on a second. Gary seconded the motion. So Willie, let me say, do you want to either speak against it or you can come up with an alternative plan or something?
I'm going here.
Turn your mic off.
Please turn the mic on.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, another second.
Uh, okay. Bill, you got anything to say? Okay, I guess we're going to vote then. Ann?
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
All right, thank you very much. Steve and I will talk in the morning, try to figure out what to do. Out of Dean nine, we have a, I have a handout. This, I think, is urgent enough that we need to get moving on this. I think it's a very simple plan to, and we have a copy for the press. And if there's anybody else, I think we have some extras. I've got mine, so. Oh, okay, I do, no, I do need this one. This is a, this is an idea to, in one week, put together a request for proposal for going out to the headhunters of the world to say, please give us your proposals for working with the City of Astor, City Council, to find a city manager. It has nothing to do with the city manager except figuring out a consulting firm. And to do that, you've got to have a request for proposal. Or, as Tanya points out, we could also have something that's less complicated called a, am I right? A request for quotation, which Steve, as I understand from Tanya, is much less complicated, but it's the same thing. So we would, so this is a request, an idea to put a little committee together, a little quickie process that will allow us to come back on next Tuesday with a draft request for proposal for headhunters. And we'd like to get that done, and then we can get that written up. Changes any way y'all want when we get there. And then we'll shoot it out to people and try to get some, so then we can start figuring out, sorting through the headhunters. That's what this is about. I think it's pretty simple. I want to give you time to read it. And if it makes sense, I also, in the past, we've often had a consultant like Ms. Ray go write these things. We have a perfectly good HR person here. Steve is making available Tanya to help us with this and do most of the work. I don't see any reason why we spent money on this. Libby Sartain is a world-class person who would be willing to help us. We need one other council member to work on this thing and chosen by y'all. So that's my proposal.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that the mayor, the city manager, Libby Sartain, and one of the senior council members, I guess that would be Willie, form a committee. Over the next week, we take recommendations from the staff, any committees, chairs. the next week, we take recommendations from the staff, any committees, chairs, that are going to be submitting, submit your ideas of what that looks like as far as a city manager, and that this committee come back-
It's just for a proposal for a group to work with, it has nothing to do with the complexion of the city manager. What would we like to have in terms of a firm to work with to find a city manager?
You don't want to address the qualifications for that-
Well, that may be in it, but I don't know, whatever you want, whatever, as long as it's, we know, we're not talking about hiring a city manager, we're talking about-
No, no, we're not talking, we're just talking about coming up with some of the parameters that we want to provide to a headhunter for finding a city manager. So, we have a committee, the city manager, the mayor, Willie, Libby Sardane, and then input from anybody on the staff, committees-
Commissions and boards.
Commissions and boards, over the next week, for them to provide to prospective headhunters that will be, that list will be brought back to the city next week.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
I think maybe the easy, I'd like to suggest that we change the motion to follow the process that's been proposed on this-
Just to do that?
Item D9 attachment, so if you're willing to withdraw your motion, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion?
You want the new motion?
The new mo, the new motion that will follow as proposed.
Second.
D9.
Okay, let's, let's vote, Ann.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dall Rosin?
All right, thank you all.
Steve? Two, four, and five. Say it again? Two, four, and five?
Yes, sir.
The Bastrop City Council will meet in a closed executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Coach after 551 and Sec. to discuss the following, section 551072, deliberation regarding real property, regarding the purchase exchange, lease disposition, negotiation, or value of real property. Section 551087, to discuss, evaluate, or deliberate regarding commercial, financial, business, or other information that the city has received related to economic development opportunities or prospects, I'm reading the wrong thing, sorry. Section 551086, to discuss certain public power utilities, competitive matters, best our power line budget, and/or related electric, public power utility information that matters. Section 551074, personnel matters, city manager, and we are in executive session.